Good afternoon. Welcome to this August 20th School Board Work Session.
That was a good one.
Thank you for joining us this afternoon. And I think we're ready to get started. Ms. Wilmington, do we have all of the evaluations in? Are we still waiting for some?
Mine, yes.
This one?
Sorry.
Okay. If we could, please, get those in.
Yes.
Appreciate that. So Madam Superintendent?
Yes.
You ready to get started?
We are. Good afternoon, everyone. And before us today, we have our first item, which is the impact fee presentation. And our first presenter is going to be Mr. Clancy. And followed by Mr. Clancy, we will have Todd Bond of BOCC and Bill Beasley, followed behind them. So, Ms. Clancy, I believe your PowerPoint is loaded. Can you click on that for him, please? And get that one up?
It's cute with your hair. Thanks. It was hot and I had a meeting.
And I should mention that Mr. Townsend is going to be just a few minutes late joining us.
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm calling with Duncan Associates. I just kind of have a brief presentation to talk about the update. I'm the consultant for the county. And just to give you a brief overview, I'm going to talk about the legal basics of impact fees or the background for this study, the update itself, very briefly, in comparison with other Florida counties. And then some implementation options, which are really a segue into the rest of the counties. So, just the basics of impact fees. I mean, impact fees are different from a tax because you have to meet some legal requirements. You have to show, for one thing, you can't charge more than the existing level of service. And that's kind of one of the fundamental principles. The fees have to be proportional, unlike a tax. I didn't realize I had to highlight that. The fees have to be reduced to avoid double charging for things like developer's actions and other taxes and fees. And you have to track the funds separately and use only for capacity improvements. You can't use them for maintenance or replacement. There's also actually a Supreme Court decision from 1991 in St. John's County, a case involving St. John's County, where the county was not charging, well, the county charged school impact fees, but only applied in the unincorporated area unless the city entered into an interlocal agreement, and none of the cities had. And the court said, well, that's unconstitutional. You have to, basically, everybody that benefits from the improvement needs to pay. So, they set a pretty high bar for, and that's obviously not directly comparable to, obviously, the Polk County's fee as countywide. But that did play a factor when we looked at sub-area fees, how to address that issue. That was an issue that had to be addressed.
And if I could interject something. The issue of sub-area fees was, for the benefit of my colleagues on the board, was not something that we had offered or suggested. It was something that the BOCC was kind of considering.
The board was considering doing something along those lines.
Yes, sir.
They decided that probably wasn't worth pursuing. So, and then there's also statutory requirements, which are mostly procedural. You've got to base the fees on the most recent look like. They got to limit administrative charges to actual costs. You've got to provide a 90-day notice before imposing an increase in fees. And they added a new one this year. You need to inflate the value of credits proportional with the increase in fees. So, if you increase the fees, the credits need to be increased as well, any developer credit. So, if a developer had dedicated some land for a school and had a credit, then the value of that credit would increase with the increase in the fees. So essentially, if they had dedicated enough to pay for one, two, or 10 students or 10 needs students, they would get that same, or a single-family unit, they would get that So, a little bit of background about the county's fees in general. They were last updated in 2015, so it's been about four years. The school fees, a lot of parks and libraries were phased in 50% by 2017, and they remain there. The road fees went to 100% by 2017, and the rest of the fees were phased into 100% by 2018. And the little pie charts sort of give you a picture of how much of the residential fees are for schools, obviously non-residential, which on commercial on the other side, non-residential doesn't pay school impact fees. Roads is their big fee, but actually, in Polk County, schools is the big fee for residential. And a little more background on the school fees. They were updated in 2010, two updates ago, at about $9,500 per single-family unit, and that was implemented at 44% by the board. So, the fee at that time was $4,160. Then there was a moratorium on all fees except schools from 2010 to 2015. And then in 2015, the fees were, the school fees were updated to about $10,000 per single-family unit. And that was phased in over, I think, two years to 50%. So, that's where they stand now, from 52 to 42. And then in 2019, in the current update, we're calculating a maximum fee of almost $12,000 per single-family unit. And you see here the changes to the single-family fees, and this is, this is showing all the fees, but it's just kind of to emphasize, at least when you're looking at residential, how big a portion schools, the school fee is. They've got the current fee in gray. The last study is in orange, and then the green is the current update. So, the fees have gone up kind of about the same percentage as all the other fees. It may not look like it on this table, but percentage-wise, it's about the same, about But in dollar terms, it's on there because it's most of the single-family fee. Brief description of the methodology. The fee is basically students generated times the net cost per student. They're pretty basic. The net cost per student is the cost per student minus the credit per student. So, in terms of how you get to the cost per student, the first part of that, net cost, there's two types of methodologies. There's plan-based and standards-based. Standards-based is just the cost of the capacity of one student is what you charge for a student. And that's what we typically use, that's used in most school impact fees in Florida. We did look at the plan-based this time around and decided that was probably not worth pursuing. You really don't have a long-range, you know, 20-year master plan that we would need, that we could really use to base the fees on. So, and then the credit, on the credit part, we used the present value, we took the present value of other taxes used for new school capacity, and we also did a credit for existing school-related And this just kind of sums up those pieces, and we looked at both the studies we did for you guys. The first two columns, the local studies, the 2015 and 2019 Duncan Studies for Polk. And you can see that the cost per student is a sum of the school construction, land costs, ancillary facilities, and that's things like this building, administrative space, you know, buses and related facilities. So, you can see that, you know, there are some changes there, but basically, the cost per student is basically the same as, what, five years ago? Land costs are up, ancillary costs are down a little bit, construction costs are a tiny bit, but on balance, it's up just a very little bit. So, the big change was on the credit side. So, the credits went down from $4,000 per student to, well, about $4,300 to $2,500. So, they went down. And that, that's what really caused the increase in the net cost. The net cost is where you, what you multiply by the student generation rate. So, that was, that was, so there's an increase in the net cost due to the lower credits, and the, there was an increase in the number of students per unit. Both of those were fairly modest increases, but you add them together, and, you know, you're up to about $1,500 a student or a single-family unit. Those students per unit, by the way, are for a single-family, I should have clarified that in this chart. And if you compare, you know, we looked at some recent studies, we looked at some, you know, studies done this year that are not yet adopted and maybe won't get adopted, you know, we don't know. For Hillsborough, we did for Hillsborough County, and one that Tim Dale Oliver did for Volusia County. So, you can see, you know, there's a big range here. These are all within the last five years. We've got a study that we did in Citrus, has a very low fee of $2,500 per single-family unit. And the main reason for that, I mean, costs are lower somewhat, but you look at that student generation rate, you've got about one-fourth the student generation rate that we see in Polk County. So, they've just got many more retirees, which apparently is not the type of people you guys are getting. So, that's a, that's a huge factor in the differences in these fees. You look at, look at that recent study done for Volusia County, their student generation rate is about 60% of what yours is, and their fee is about 60% of what the fee we're calculating for you. So, of course, these are maximum fees. So, let's look at just what is being charged in this chart. So, Polk County's in green, so Polk County's kind of in the middle of the pack. The orange shows the maximum fee that we calculated in the study. So, that current fee is at 50%. This one is the updated at 100%. And it gets higher than what anybody currently charges, at almost $12,000. And if we look at all these counties in terms of both what they adopted and what the maximum fee they calculated in the study, you can see there's a big range. This is ordered in terms of the maximum fee, which is the orange bar. And your Polk County's current, what happened to be the 2015 study, is the fourth one from the, from the right edge. So, I wanted to highlight that. It was getting, getting pretty busy with colors.
No. I don't believe we have that slide anywhere.
What's that?
I don't believe we have that slide.
I don't have that one.
No, I just added that slide.
Right, but that's, that's the most important slide, quite frankly.
It's big, yeah.
Right, because the one-
Well, there was also a memo. Did you get the memo?
No.
Oh, okay.
I did last.
Is there where you could email that slide?
Yeah, if we could get that.
Yeah, I prepared a memo for the county, and I thought that we sent that.
Okay. And maybe some got it. I just didn't-
It doesn't have the graphic of it, it has the numbers.
Okay.
But I can send you, well, you've got, it's on the slideshow here, but I can email it to you guys.
Yeah, we need, we need-
Yeah, sorry about the slideshow.
Yeah. Well, because to me, that's very poignant. This just shows, you know, what it's calculated and what we're doing, but that, to me, is really where the rubber meets the road for each of the counties, so, yes.
Yeah. It may be trying to show too much information, but-
And Ms. Cunningham, the county is one present behind him.
Okay.
Remind him.
Anyway.
The county's-
So, this is a segue into the county portion of it. They're going to talk about implementation options. They're going to, obviously, these could be adopted 100%. They're going to be adopted a lower percentage, as the county's traditionally done, to phase them in over time. And there's also a thing that they're looking at about paying it through an additional property tax, maybe some of it. So, I'll let the county get it. If anybody has any questions for me, though.
Mr. Townsend?
So, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right. It looks like we have a higher student generation rate than Osceola County does? Like, the, the growth that we're producing, we're, we're getting is producing more students than, I mean, per capita than Osceola does? Is that, is that, is that right? That's, that's on the slide?
Yes.
Like, like the near to the last one?
Yes. 0.419 in ours is-
Our student generation rate than Osceola?
Yeah.
Where is Osceola on there?
Well, that also, is there 17?
That's 2017.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
19 number.
Right.
Yeah, you were hiring the last study too, than Osceola, just barely.
But even in 15, you were hiring.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Do you want to be interesting, see how that compares to every other county?
Right.
Ms. Cunningham?
Yes, going back to the slide, that's the changes to single-family fees.
That's number eight.
I don't, my pages aren't numbered.
I'm marking them.
Just go back maybe a couple slides where it shows the road, school, park, library, fire, EMS. Yeah, that one, yes, sir. We've got the current fee, the study, and then the update, but in reality, that's not what we're receiving. What we're receiving is in the gray, correct? That's why it says current?
What you're getting now.
Right.
Right.
So, even though the study and that shows much higher, we're only receiving what's in the gray portion.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that was a study done five years ago.
Correct. Okay. And the green is the updated study, but we're still not receiving anywhere near that, even though it looks like it's-
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for consultant?
Okay.
Okay. I mean, I'll be around.
Don't go too far. Yeah. Next, we have, from the board of County Commission, we have Ms. Beasley, Mr. Bond. They're coming up, and they actually have a presentation theirs. You did not get ahead of time, but you do have it. Is this one my board members? They're going to go through that. They may be to answer some of those questions as well. Thank you.
Chairman, members of the board, Madam Superintendent, thanks for having the county over. My name is Bill Beasley. I'm the new county manager in Polk County. With me today, I've got Todd Bond out of the budget office, and I've got Lina Thomas, one of our deputies, who's really been involved with impact fees for a number of years. So, before I give it to Todd to walk through really pretty much where the board seems to be settling in on adjustments, let me say that the county had, County Commission has had two work sessions on this, the most recent last week. I think the County Commission understands the challenges we're facing. I think, certainly at a macro level, I think the County Commission is making a commitment to increase school impact fees. They're not, they're not going to get to 100%. I think they certainly see the merits in reviewing it on a regular basis, but what Todd's going to present to you is a measured way of getting noticeable increases to the school's portion of those impact fees. It's going to be done incrementally over several years with commitments to continue to review that annually. I think when the county seemed to be settling on this, the county considered multiple options, whether to go to 100% right out the gate, whether to go to 100% over multiple years, whether to go to something less than 100% over multiple years. So, they, they did consider several various options. As part of their work sessions, they did have some public comment made. A strong sentiment, I think, with the board is, is that there are other factors that are involved in, other than just impact fees. When Todd shares with you, I want you to be thinking about most of these multifamily or single-family structures that are being built, where a lot of this applies, are being built in either unincorporated Polk, where there is a public utility system that serves that area, or in the municipality where there are public utility services. On top of that number, that impact, that total impact fee, has to come connection fees, has to come permitting and inspection fees. So, while you're looking just at the 12,000 or so, at the top of the range, on top of that, the County Commission has to consider what that impact is going to be to Polk County as a whole when it comes to single-family residential construction, multifamily residential-type construction, and what that does to the business community as a whole. So, I think the county looked at it at a very macro level, but was very sensitive based on their own personal experiences, but also public comments we received about, are we really moving into an affordable housing dilemma these days in terms of what it costs to build and what it costs to own a home in Polk County or in central Florida as a whole? When you start adding on these fees, so the board, I think, made a commitment to do two things. One, to say, we understand that there needs to be more fees generated associated with school impact fee needs. And two, they're going to move in that direction beginning January 1 of this year. They're going to agree to look at those things periodically to see if additional movement needs to be made, that over about a three-year period, they're going to get to that 75% mark at a minimum, assuming the economy stays strong and there's no recessional issue that might be looming. But I think I want to let Todd walk you through kind of how the numbers fell out, where the board settled in, I think nicely, in making those commitments, and we'll stand for any questions after that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Todd Bond, Todd Bond, Budget Director for the county. Just have four, four slides really. First one's just the header, so I'll be pretty brief, but I do want to answer questions, and I'll just kind of walk you through what we're showing. So, the first slide is really the plan for the impact fees. And if you look on the far left side, the first, I've been accused of being colorblind a number of times, the far left side in the kind of pink or reddish color. You see now, currently, the school fee is 5242, and if you walk down, you see the rest of the fees that the county charges, from the roads to the parks and on down. That's current. It's based on the 2015 study. The first blue column you come to from the left is then the first step in the plan for increasing impact fees moving forward, based on the 2019 study that Clancy just shared with you all. So, if you look there, what, what we would be going to on January 1st, 2020 is 55% of the 2019 study, which is 6,598. So, it's a little over $1,300 increase on the school impact fees. Then if you move into the July 1st, 2021, which is 18 months later, we'd move up to 65%. And then January 1st, 2023, we'd move up to 75% to 8,998. So, that's, that's the plan moving forward. Below that is just some deferral options the board is going to give as options for folks who want to make it a little more affordable upfront. So, they will have an option of deferring some, some dollar amounts during those timeframes too. That's really all that is. And then the next two slides, I just really wanted to show where we would be kind of as a comparison to all the other counties that charge the school impact fees on this first slide. So, if you go from the right-hand side, the orange is us. So, the, the first one from the right is the 5,242. That's where we're at right now. And then in January 1st, 2020, we go up to the 6,005. July 2,021, it goes up to the 7,798. And then January 1st, 2020, the 8,998. And then the next slide is just if you include all of our impact fees, kind of where we would be. Now, the first thing I will say is, this is, of course, a snapshot in time for the other counties, so it's not assuming any increase for them at all, because we don't know what they will do or what they would do. But that's, that's just showing where we would be at in total as a comparison.
Can I, can I add to that?
Sure.
Madam Superintendent, when you look at that slide, when you see that, when we get to 2023, and we're at a total impact fee of just over $12,000, most of which is the school's portion of that, on top of that, there is connection fees, assuming that the structure is being built in a utility district that chart, that there is a public utility district, there's those connection fees. In Polk County today, that home we're being built in Polk County is about $8,000 on top of that for utility connection fees, and then there's about 1,000 or two associated with building inspection and permitting fees. So, we, we don't want to, the county doesn't want to lose sight of the measured approach to provide the additional revenues to the schools through the raising of the impact fees, because there are other fees that are applicable that are associated with the home building industry that are being passed along to the residents. And so, I think the board is taking a very measured approach, but a proactive approach that understands they need to move the needle and provide these additional revenue sources to the school system through this raising of the impact fees, with a commitment to look at that on an annual basis.
Questions at this time? Ms. Fields?
I don't really have any questions as such, but I want to thank the county commissioners for their thoughts on having a tiered approach, rather than going from 50% to 100%. To me, would just be imaginably harmful on the community and on the first-time homeowners and making it affordable for them to be able to have a home. That's the American dream. Everybody wants a home. And making sure that we are able to get the resources that we need to deal with the growth that we have in our county. But to me, it just, it's logical that you would not go from 50% to 100%, no matter what the impact fee study is saying, in my opinion. What I would like to see is what we used to do years ago. We would sit down with the county commissioners, and the person, the consultant would present the impact fee study to all of us at the same time. And then we could have discussion on the needs, and that then happened for some unknown reason this time, I don't know why. We used to meet at least on an annual basis with the county commissioners, not just to discuss the impact fee study, but just to discuss our relationship building and whatever impact county government might have on school board, vice versa, and partnerships and relationships. So, Mr. Beasley, I know you knew, and congratulations on your new position. But if you guys could put that on your radar screen, that we would really, at least personally, I would like to be able to go back to that and, and build on a relationship that we have been able to have in the past years.
Ms. Fields, maybe we can do that maybe later in the fall. If that's still an option, I'll certainly carry that back, or send it back to the board. Yes, ma'am, I'll be glad to do that.
Thank you.
Ms. Cunningham?
Okay, a couple things. I'd also like to thank you and the county for looking at this. It's very important to us because we really feel, I think everybody around this room, that we're totally underfunded for the services that we do provide. Now, this says a three-step 18-month, but if you look at it, it's really a three-step, three-year. Am I crazy? We go from January 1, 2020 to January 1, 2023.
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's, the first increment takes effect January 2020, in several months.
Right.
And then the next increment is 18 months later.
Right.
The final increment is 18 months later.
Right. Okay. So, if I'm reading this right, it should say a three-step, three-year implementation option, or do you feel only the first is guaranteed? I, I don't know where we're at. Was this voted on yet?
No, ma'am.
No.
The consensus was-
Okay. The consensus was?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The consensus was that that's the strategy the board wanted to use, and that we have a public hearing scheduled for the first meeting in September.
Okay.
So, that the 90-day period begins October 1st, so that we can implement January 1st.
I see. Okay. Because that kind of scares me, because the way it reads, I would think whatever they adopt is only for the first 18 months.
Yes, ma'am. They have to, they'll adopt in January 2020-
Yes, sir.
-the first phase increment, and then every year thereafter, they have to adopt to implement-
So, I am reading it right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, the third one, January 1, 2023, is not guaranteed and not part of this adoption.
I, I don't, I don't-
That's how it reads.
I don't think I can say guaranteed, because they have-
No.
This board or subsequent board has to vote on that-
Every year.
Every year that it's ready to be implemented.
Okay.
But I think that certainly the county seems to be committed to trying to secure, move that needle so that we get some additional revenue for that program in that manner.
Okay. And would you say from their, and once again, I'm, I agree with Ms. Fields. We've always met, talked about these things, and kind of said, hey, how we feel, areas of growth, whatever. Because quite frankly, I mean, I know we're a little concerned about the economic development impact to the, you know, greater Polk County community, if you will, but I don't see a slack in, in subdivisions and houses going up. If anybody does, they just need to drive up 27 and take some of the backroads. I mean, we're, we're- I mean, we're exploding.
Yes.
So I, I mean, and if you're going to buy a home, I don't think the difference, whatever that is, is going to, that miniscule difference in the change is going to stop anybody, quite frankly, from purchasing a home. But what I do see is it's, it's really difficult for us to do what we have to do on the facility side without receiving adequate funding through this source that's been developed for everyone. I mean, fire, EMS, you name it, all the, all the parties listed. And so I just hope that you, from my perspective, that you can go back and tell them that we're very thankful, but at the same time, I wish it was more. I'll be very honest. We are struggling to be able to meet the needs of the growth without having the adequate resources and funding to give our facilities department. I mean, literally, if rain's not coming into your classroom or you don't have a safety issue for kids, your request is kind of put to the back burner and we can give you all that statistics if you need it. So yes, I'm encouraged that these conversations are happening. I thank those around this table that have talked to the county commissioners and continue to do so, but anything that we can do to move that needle forward would be so very much appreciated.
Yes, ma'am, I'll convey that.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Miller?
I just, kind of a, to go along with Ms. Cunningham, where we're at is, you know, we have people, the business community, saying we need better schools and better facilities. So people aren't leaving our community to live outside and drive in, but we have to be able to create those schools for them. So it's a catch-22. They're not going to live here and build houses if there's not schools adequate for them to attend or they feel is at the same level they could find in Osceola or Hillsborough or Orange. So I appreciate the, and I've been in contact with a few of our commissioners and I appreciate the work that's being done here, but we are inadequately funded for the amount, the capacity that we're trying to hold. So I, I appreciate this work and to know that it's going to move forward, to know that it's going to be voted on every year is something we need to stay, you know, atop of. But thank you for coming today.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Wilson?
So I'm a little confused. What I'm hearing is that each part of this has to be adopted and voted on each year by the board of county commissioners.
When they make an adjustment.
When they make an adjustment. But, but the first time we did this, a few years ago, they voted the entire, entirety of the plan in, in one meeting. They weren't, as I, as I recall, they weren't have, they didn't have to update the plan every year. And I'm sure the same concerns as Cunningham, how, how do we know we're going to get to 75%? It would be nice if we knew that upfront. So that's one question I have. We were close to a moratorium in the northeast part of the county at one time, so we certainly don't want to go there again. That's clearly going to hamper economic development. So I'm concerned about that. But I will offer this. I, it is, if my math is correct, it looks like if we implemented the full 100%, it would make us, we would have the highest impact fees of any county in Florida. I'm not sure we need that distinction either. So I'm not sure we're that, we're that happy medium wide, but those are, those are some of the thoughts I have and maybe you could convey those as well.
Mr. Wilson?
I will say, looking at, we didn't have your PowerPoint until today. So looking at the PowerPoint that we did receive, was a little bit concerned coming in, looking at that we were, what the new 100% would be, which is essentially double what it was before. So I just want to say thank you for the, looking at both sides and phasing it in gradually because I think that's really important, that we do obviously need more funds to build our schools, but we also need to make sure that we're not hampering economic development and making sure that it's phased in gradually. So thank you for the consciousness on that.
Mr. Wilson, though, Mr. Townsend?
Mr. Vaughn, I think you may have had an answer to my question and I, I cut you off. I apologize for that.
No, no, that's fine. Actually, I, my recollection is that they still had to go in and approve it each time that it goes up. My plan recalls back when they did the adjustments.
I believe it required it in statute.
Okay.
Oh, so we didn't raise it. That may be the...
Yeah.
No action taken, no action taken. It stayed steady.
So this, this is the intent.
Okay.
But then there's always, you know, that chance it could adjust as they, as they may change us, so. But they did say also in the work session that we had on August 13th, that they wanted regular input from the budget office as to what our building permits look like, what our revenues look like, how everything's moving forward, so that every year as part of the budget process, we'll be bringing that to the board so they can look at it and ensure that, you know, it's really not having an impact on our building permit, or is it? And, and, you know, decide, does this change or does this still meet what we need, so.
Mr. Chairman, superintendent, what I would envision on those annual updates to the board is not just county data and metrics about building permits, population growth. It may be school metrics, it may be student population, it may be concurrency issues, it may be capacity issues, things that collectively would give the board some information about, is this vision on, to get to 75 over three years, is that vision still solid? Does it need to be tweaked in any way? It would be shared metrics, so we'll work with the school board staff on that.
Mr. Townsend?
Well, just to that point, I mean, I think this is a very fluid discussion. It tends to be treated like a once every four-year or whatever, one time. You know, I think we should probably have a professional staff committee that meets a couple of times a year that then reports up the context to the elected boards. You know, we, we have uneven capacity. I mean, our, we have some of the, some of the self-inflicted capacity problems. You know, we have some, some, some places where we're vastly over capacity and some places where we're significantly under. I think we certainly need to make sure we're, we're, we're utilizing facilities we have as efficiently as we have. And I think that that's a good discussion to have in conjunction with, with your, your folks as well. But I think the experts on this should be meeting a couple of times a year and like producing a report, you know, or it doesn't have to be a 30-page thing, but you know, like sort of a state of where we are, not, not, not just for, not just for 2021 or 2023, but in perpetuity. You know, I think the, the economy is like, like likely to turn fairly poor in, in the next year or so and, you know, it's just a fluid situation and we need to treat it that way. Our organizations need to be in contact, particularly the people with the expertise, which is not us, you know, so.
I'd like to, I'll talk to superintendent offline about a standing committee type of relationship, yes, sir.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be 30 people, it can be four, you know, but great.
That's what you're saying. I don't used to meet, no?
Yes, we did. Mm-hmm.
Mr. Beasley, I think what I want to make sure we have clear from this point moving forward, because you say there's the public hearing on the 3rd.
Yes, ma'am, 3rd of September.
Okay, so if any of the constituents or community members had questions or anything they need to have, you know, answered, is that, that meeting, am I correct?
You can contact my office if you want just incidental information or questions that you'd like to ask about the study and how the board moves to this plan. If you want to make a public comment, that would be the form to do that when we go into public hearing on that.
What time is that?
I believe it's a 1:30.
It's the same time.
I'm not sure where it lies.
It's the same day as our meeting.
Other public hearings scheduled that day could be afternoon session, the regular board meeting.
It's the same day as our regular work session. It is. Well, we could submit information and maybe have staff or someone there. Thank you.
Any other questions, Vaughn?
I was just going to mention, I did have a copy of the memo that Clancy mentioned earlier, so I'll pass this around.
Well, that'd be great. Thank you.
I only made 15, so I'm not sure I have enough.
I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
I'll let the board members hear that, just in case they have any questions before.
Yeah, what's the median price of a home? Mr. Hickman is in the back. He may be able to answer that question for us. What's the median price of a home in Polk County, Mr. Hickman, do you know?
Sorry, sir.
According to Zillow, it's 180.
I think they're using a, I think it's like 180, 185, 182. Fees associated with, you know, public fees to get a permit and so forth. If you're using a 2,000 square foot home, that would be at least 250,000, so I think your, your price would be somewhere in the range of this.
It's a heavy lift for some people.
Are there any other questions? Not we received as far as that.
Okay. All right. Thank you both. All three of you, thank you so much. The next item you have coming before you will be Ms. Dodge, and she has policy updates.
I don't want you distracted.
Very depressing.
There we are.
There, that's better.
Okay, there are two sets of policy updates for you this afternoon. The first is staff-generated and that is just to address some grooming policies, adding a little bit of language that Neola asked us to add, but also adding the requirement that we started last year about the students wearing their badges on campus for middle and high schools. So were there any questions? And then the second are the Neola recommended updates. And there are just four of those.
Are there any questions on the Neola updates?
You guys are fabulous. And if there's more questions...
What, what about the one we discussed, the last one? What's the status on that one?
That is the records retention. That will come before you at the September 3rd board meeting at the public hearing the next time. We have to have 30 days in between, so you did that at the last work session. We didn't have 30 days to this board meeting tonight, so it'll come before you September 3rd.
Right, but I thought that language was going to come back to us to see ahead of time, like, I mean...
What we did, I mean, I can email you everybody out what we changed and what we re, changed it to, but basically we said, we defined, like you asked, documentary evidence and said it includes, but is not limited to these things that were in the other optional language things that had initially been struck out. But I'll send it to everybody so you can pick what we have.
Yes, please do.
Ms. Miller?
I just have a comment on procedural, what, what you just mentioned. We do that a lot. We talk about things and there are going to be changes made and then it ends up on the board. I appreciate you sending out that update and I'd like to do that with other things that we discussed instead of it just talking about it at the work session, lots of conversation, and then there's a board item. To have that update on what you're doing will help move along all those documents that we're reviewing.
Whenever, just for your own knowledge, whenever I make a change to a policy that you have seen, you see every policy, you have to have two hearings.
Right.
You have a first hearing here and a second hearing, which is your final hearing at the board meeting. And so whenever I make any changes to something you've already seen, I do send that out to the board and say, hey, just so you know, we changed a couple of things in here.
I appreciate that.
So that it'll, so that you can give it a little extra attention.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Wendy. The next item is item three, and that's Mr. Wood.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
You're welcome.
At the last work session, the board had a discussion about what additional tax revenues might be able, might be available to you for current operational needs, e.g., salaries. I went into this and I've been making, making myself smart on, on this at the same time I'm trying to share the, the information with you. And I went into it with the, with the focus on the, what, what you see in the, in the statute when it refers to non-voted operational levy. And I have reviewed this with, with folks in finance. After I did the, the memo and sent it out, I got a call saying, you know, I think we've already, we've already plucked that fruit. So that's already included with your trim notice for this year, that .748 that the statute allows for nondiscretionary, for discretionary, non-voted. Everything else has to be voted. So I included with the memo that I sent to you, a document that Ms. Fortney actually had obtained from FSBA showing what other districts had done on that. You'll notice, I think there's only, only one district in there. I think Manatee was the one that, that had both. Make sure I got that right. Yeah, that had both the half-cent sales tax and a full mill for operating expenses. But there was a list of other districts that have, have adopted millage for various purposes, and you'll see the language varies from district to district. Many of them included in that operational levy money for safe and secure schools as well as salaries, so that those, those can both be counted for current operational needs. Mr. Wilson had an interesting conversation with Tom Nolan, our consultant, and Mr. Nolan looked at our, at our resolution. Remember our conversation at the last meeting? We talked about the, the resolution for sales tax that included language in it that forestalls any ad valorem tax in excess of what we had levied in 2018. And, and I have the language for you in your, on page two of your memo, that the school board upon approval of the discretionary sales surtax would implement a freeze on non-capital local school property at the millage rate imposed in the year prior to the implementation of the surtax, which that year was 2018. And this is language that carried over from the original sales tax referendum in 2003. As we mentioned, that was a representation that was made that, hey, if you'll approve this, we, we won't, we won't come back to that well for at least three years. But Mr. Nolan made the very interesting observation that, to the extent the legislature has rolled back the millage that we are able to levy, that there may be a little bit of room between the, between the current rate and the, and the rate from 2018. Now, in order to get that, you're going to have to do a referendum. And in Polk County, you have, you can only do a referendum for ad valorem taxes at a general election. You'll remember several years ago, the county, originally when we, when we did this, we took our referendum, we had it at a, at a primary election. You could also have it in a special election. But several years ago, the voters of Polk County changed the Polk County charter. So we have a restriction that other counties do not have, and that is that anytime you're going to impose or attempt to levy an ad valorem tax by referendum, that has to be placed on the ballot at a general election. It has to be a November election. For what it's worth, if we, it's, it's not practical to get a referendum on, on the, on the ballot for 2019, but if you do it in 2020, you'll be doing it at a presidential election. And my crystal ball doesn't tell me at this point whether, whether that's a positive or a negative, but something to bear in mind. But in any event, the, this avenue is available to you, but the, the only nondiscretionary, the only discretionary non-voted monies, you've already tapped. So whatever you do going forward will have to be by referendum.
Okay. Mr. Wilson?
So if I could just elaborate a little bit, I think the core issue was the inability to go out for three years. But the reality is, we're already two years in, so the best we could do would be, would be, we would, worst-case scenario, we would lose one year. So I think from my perspective, there are a lot of things that the board might choose to do, but from my perspective, I like the idea and open, am open to the idea of going back to that time when we had the highest millage rate, which was about 10 years ago, and bringing it up to that level through a referendum, infectively negating the rollback over a period of time. I think what we found here in this language was that we, if we chose to do that as a board, we couldn't recover all of it in that one last year, but we could recover at least some of it. And that, who knows what that would be at that point in time? Right now, it's roughly 4 million. It could be anywhere between 10 to 15 million dollars. That would, without violating our promise to, to the voters. So that would give us, if we, again, we're already two years in, so really... So that would give us, if we, again, we're already two years in, so really we lose one year, and that would give us something for that one year, it might, again, might be worth $15 million. I think the conversation is, if the board wanted to go that route, was, is do we effectively want to roll that into two, one referendum into two different, two different things happening? We want to recover all of that millage that we've lost over the years in the, in the fourth year or after the third year, but recover part of it, whatever, whatever it was relative to 2018, in that, in that third year. So, does that help or no? Does that make things muddier?
Yeah, it's, this is, there are a lot of moving parts in this. We could not go back and, and recover revenues that we didn't, had not assessed previously. It's not retroactive. But what we, what we could do is, to the extent there is a difference between what, what the levy was in 2018 and what the levy is at the time of any referendum, since the legislature had, had rolled back, we could recover that for the, prospectively for the last year, and then going forward, could do a referendum for additional operational millage. We've got plenty of, well, I shouldn't say we have plenty. There's room, under the Constitution, there's a maximum of 10 mills that is available, and we're well below that, but you can only get it by levy, by referendum.
Scott Cunningham?
Okay, so, having read your letter to us regarding this whole thing, I took a different, I read it differently. I read that based on what we did in the resolution, 1719-08, it allows the board to levy a non-voted discretionary millage beginning January 1 of 2022.
And, and when I, when I met with Mr. Peron and Mr. Pitts, we have already done that. That's included with your discretionary mill, in your trim notice for this year. So I had put that language in there, but we've already, we've already snatched that fruit.
We already have.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
That was my question.
So it was, it was good for me to educate myself, but that was, that was, that was ink that I wasted, because we've already done.
We've already done that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Towns?
I mean, if you read the memo, my first reaction to it was, I've been telling people for two, for two years I have no vote, that I could take to increase your taxes, and I'm lying, but I'm, but I'm, but I'm not. Glad, glad to understand. It is discretionary only in name, there's no real discretion. You lose a whole bunch of other stuff, you don't go do it. Thirdly, if you read the memo, that language actually applies to this. If we're, if we're going to restrict our, it's called discretionary, we levy it in trim. If we're going to apply the language that none of us knew, none of us caught, and none of us knew we were even agreeing to, you know, for better or worse, or I, you know, I, I can only speak for myself, I won't. I, I, I thought you were telling us we needed to undo our discretionary levy, because I thought you would have already known.
No, 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 and I apologize for the confusion there. They did, the point of the memo was, there is in statute a, a small amount that you can, that you can levy, that you have the discretion to levy without a vote. And it was not clear to me that that was included in the trim notice that you already do. It is, so you have already, you have already done that. Whatever else you would want to do on, in other words, there is, there is no other non-voted millage available to the board. Anything else would have to be done through a referendum. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And I apologize for the confusion. That was, that was my initial understanding coming in when I read the statute. It talks about the, there is a discretionary non-voted millage, and I said, aha, this is what, this is what they're after. Turns out, you've already done it. It's already in the notes.
So, to be clear, there is no vote that we can take as a board that says, that raises, raises, or, there's no existing vote.
There is no vote, no vote I'm aware of that, by which you could actually levy additional tax. You, you can certainly vote to approve a resolution requesting a referendum be placed on the ballot, but, but the, any additional, any additional millage is going to have to come from the voters. Mr. Peron, did I state that correctly?
Correct.
Thank you.
To, just to your point, I don't think there's any way around taking the hit that we, we, we let those five words get in, get into the resolution. I think if you try to explain how we're really not doing, doing this, this or that, the much more honest, direct way is, we're in an emergency, no one was contemplating it at the time. We just didn't catch it, it was cut and pasted from 2003. Why, why our attorneys or why our consultants didn't say, hey, we're doing this again? I mean, again, we, it's, we're the elected officials, we should have read it and caught it. I, I read right, 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 right over it, but that was never discussed, it was never sold. It wasn't part of anything except a cut-and-paste job. And if we limit ourselves to a smaller mill, we're wasting the whole energy of it, because we're going to get the same criticism no matter what we do.
Well, just for one year, the smaller mill just for one year, and then the full mill every year after that.
Can we build that into one, to one referendum?
Well, I think we can. But, but I think we can, but if I, if I could elaborate a little bit. Point well taken, but I would offer this. We, again, regardless of anything else that's happened, by the time we get this done, we're two years in.
Right.
So, and I'm with Mr. Bridges. I would not be in favor of doing this during a presidential election year. I think that's suicidal. So I would, my preference would be to wait until it, in my opinion, there's a, the best possible chance of getting it done, because you're only going to get one bite at the apple. And, and that would be, so that takes this out of play anyway, if you look at it from that perspective.
And, and I, I don't, I don't wish to kick the nest, but the language that, that was referred to is language that was placed very deliberately in the 2003 referendum, which was successful. And when the board was preparing to try to renew this, it does so in an environment where there's always a question as to whether the voters are going to approve an additional tax upon themselves. So that was, it was placed there, once again, it, it, it was, it was the same language, similar language to the one in 2003 ballot, but that was placed there for a reason to, to induce voters to support that particular, that particular tax on themselves. And I think it was reasonable, reasonable to put there, and I certainly, certainly take your point that there was no detailed discussion of it in this round as we went forward. But that was placed there by a consultant whose, whose job it was to give us our best shot at having the voters of Polk County approve that, that tax upon themselves. So that, that's why it's there, it was not arbitrary, and it's not something that, that an auditor or an attorney would look at and say, that, that shouldn't be there. It was placed there for, for a, for a reason at that time, and that was to induce the county to place it on the ballot, to induce the voters of Polk County to approve it, so.
But...
For what it's worth, that's, that's why it was there.
But it's...
Ms. Fields? Ms. Fields, Dan, I saw Ms. Rose.
I was in at the last work session when this was discussed, and I read the resolution, and I read the memo from Mr. Bridges, dated Office of 15th, and there was a lot of information in there. And one of the things that really came to my mind is, when we did the sales tax renewal, it was the Polk promise. And it, it really concerns me that we made a promise. It doesn't matter if we didn't read it or not, we, we made a promise. Mr. Bridges read what that promise was, we weren't going to go out for three years. And now, we're trying to figure out how we can skirt around it and get it done for whatever reasons may be. And I want to make it publicly known, I am not in support of this. We should have read it, we didn't read it. It was signed, it was signed by the chair, and it was discussed at one of the board meetings, I'm sure. It was finally read in the record of the bank, I don't remember. But I am not in support of it, and I think we need to look at, where are our budget shortfalls? And where are we on not just salaries for staff, but where are we on the income that we are receiving from impact fees currently? Where are we on the sales tax monies that we're getting? All these things, I mean, I don't have all that in front of me when we're looking at trying to make decisions on things related to making sure that we're whole and doing the best that we can. And I think that we are always talking about staff using their time wisely and making sure that the resources are there. I just think it was a waste of Mr. Bridges' time to go and do all this stuff, when at the end of the day, we said we weren't going to do this. So I don't even know why we're having a discussion, but now we want to go back and want to do it. So, I mean, it probably won't make any difference what I'm saying, because to me, it's like one or two people on this board want to run everything, and then everybody else is wanting to sit back and let them run it. Well, I'm not, I will sit here, I would be by myself, but I am not going to go in support of something when we said we weren't going to do it, and then now we're coming back saying that we are.
Ms. Rose?
I would agree with Mr. Wilson about that, you know, going along with what Kay said. We promised the voters that we wouldn't go three years. Whether or not they read the referendum is probably unlikely, but at the same time, they should be reading the referendum, because we're hoping that they're researching what they're voting on. But I think that it's important that we follow what we said in the referendum. I also think that if we go out for a mill, two years in, specifically when we've promised that we won't, but it's too soon, our, I don't think that we'll get it passed. That's, the business community is saying, the people that supported us the last time are saying, you know, we just did this, so why are we doing it again? Well, the people that I'm talking to and the business community are saying that they don't want to support it again.
The people who supported us la, 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 last time said, said this would be fine.
Okay, well, the people that I've talked to that have supported us last time are saying that they would not support this again. So I would be willing to consider it in four years, but I would not consider doing it for the next election.
Well, again, going back to what you wrote, that's where I was headed with my question. So, basically, we shouldn't be doing anything until January 1 of 2022. Did I read that correctly?
That's, that's what...
Because that's what was implied, even though the language, as you said, did not appear on the ballot, so was therefore not approved, it was what was stated.
It was in, it was in the resolution adopted by the school board.
Yes, board and the, it says, and the county, Board of County Commissioners.
Right.
Right? Transmitted to them.
The way this worked, we, the board approved the resolution.
Right.
And transmitted to the county commission.
County commission.
And asked them to put the language on the ballot, which they did.
On the ballot.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so basically, we're saying we should not be doing anything until January 1, 2022. Am I, do I?
Yes, that, that was the exact language from your...
Is that what you're saying? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Well, indeed, I, I did sign this, and indeed, I read it. And at the time, it seemed the prudent thing to do. In retrospect, now that we, that referendum passed so easily, maybe not so, but at the time, it seemed a prudent thing to do, and, and so, you know, hindsight's 20/20. We, we can, what we, what we promised was that we would not enact new taxes for three years. It doesn't mean that we can't have a referendum with the intent of enacting those taxes after three years. That would not be breaking the promise of anyone. And what I was offering is that we, there, if we did some small piece of it in the third year, in my opinion, based on the promise we made, we would not be breaking that promise. So I don't see anything we're talking about doing breaking a promise of anyone that, that we made to our community, regardless of what we choose to do here. But I, I, just from a practical perspective, I, I think it would be ill-advised to put this on a ballot during a presidential election year. So that, I think that in and of itself makes everything else pretty moot, from my perspective. So, that's my take on it.
Okay, Ms. Miller?
As a new board member who wasn't around for this, I do appreciate what you put together for us, because it helps me understand better what took place. I just need to clarify, so what the chairman is describing is, it wouldn't take effect within the dates in that year, that span, but you would act, they would act on it to go into effect the following, after it expires. That you're asking for the vote, so it would, it would be implemented after the expiration date of this said implied promise?
At this point in time, we, if we choose, chose to do a referendum, we could do it in the third year, in the third year of, what would that be? Whatever, what would that be?
Yes, you could do it in '21 to be effective in '22.
We could do it in '21 to be effective in '22, or we could wait till '22 and do it in '22.
And it would be effective?
Twenty-two.
It would be effective the same year?
Well, you would do a resolution in the, in the general election, which is in November.
Right, November.
And then it would take effect the following January. Yes, ma'am. I believe that's how that works.
So you're saying if you act on it sooner, it would go outside of this implied promise?
No, I'm saying that if you did it, this is '19, if you did it in '21, you could do a small piece of, you could actually implement a small piece of it in '22 and not break our promise.
Okay.
Right.
Or, and then the full impact of it would occur in '23.
Twenty-three. What's good for us new board members who aren't here, who try to read all 20,000 documents that are presented weekly?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Mr. Towns?
Now, because what matters here is helping the public provide what it's, their public education sits the needs within their choice, I'm willing to certainly take the personal hit for not catching that. Had I caught, caught it at the time, I would have said I'm not, I, I, I wouldn't have voted against the resolution, but I would have said very quickly, I'm not bound by this three-year thing. I, I just didn't catch, catch it, because we needed the sales tax. That's very much like the, the intent that we just heard from the, the Polk County Commission about raising impact fees in two years. Also, I want to be very clear, everybody on this board, last budget meeting, violated this, this promise. Wes's, Wes's, Wes's memo makes it very clear. When you voted for the discretionary mill, you, you, you voted for something discretionary. And, you know, I, I think that's certainly what I read in, in Wes's, that to have adopted it is violating what was...
We still have not, we still have not exceeded the, the millage of 2018. That's, that's the upper bound.
That's the issue.
The legislature rolled us back. So, but in doing this, we still, we're still below, and that's what, what Mr. Wilson was suggesting, that we might have available to us would be the difference between the 2018 level and what it is now. It's a small difference, but there is a difference, and we are below it. So you, you haven't, you certainly have not violated the, the promises that you made in the, in the resolution in adopting your trim notice for this year.
In any event, in whatever form is required to get whatever the maximum support is, I, I want to be on record saying I'm willing to suffer whatever per, personal embarrassment or, or campaign, campaigning, and anti-campaigning there might be, to try to pay the people who do the work every day. And that's a political choice, everybody has to make it for the, for themselves. I will, I'm on board for it. So whoever else is on board for it, let's, let's, let's talk.
Ms. Fortney?
What is it?
Like, whatever form it takes, if it is lens, lens, lens form, I'm fine, I'm fine with that. I mean, I, I mean, I, I mean, there's, I would do it all now. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to do it all now, but I don't think there's any support for that. So, you know, what I care about is not a cut-and-paste from the 2003 resolution. I care about the human beings and the daily function of the kids and teachers who are suffering every day. And I think the public cares about that too, because they talk to me about it every day. They don't talk about the cut-and-paste job from, from 2003. So I just want to make that clear.
Mr. Wilson?
Well, I think what I'm hearing is that the board generally is in favor of it, but in favor of doing it in 2021, effective 2022.
Which is what he wrote.
Have we, have we, have we agreed to that?
Well, I, I think that's what I'm hearing generally, am I not?
This is what we said.
Right, that's what it says.
But try to recover a year before that.
Well, I'm not hearing that. I'm hearing, I'm hearing you go out in the third year.
Which still would not violate...
Right, if you, if you wanted to do that, and assuming that the legislature does not increase...
Wanted to do what?
If you, if you wanted to try to capture... If you, if you wanted to try to capture that difference between, between the maximum of 2018 and the, and the current legislative set, you would have to do a referendum. You can't do one in 2019. The earliest you could do it would be 2020. You can't get it on the ballot in 2019. The earliest you could do it would be 2020. And if you did it in 2020, what, what I think Mr. Wilson is, is proposing is a referendum that has two parts. Number one, to, to do an operational levy up to the maximum set by that 2018, by the 28 millage that would be effective all through '21.
Twenty-one.
And then at the end of '21, I think what Mr. Wilson is suggesting is go ahead, whenever, if we were to do that at the same time, do a referendum to, to do a, a mill, some, some operational millage that would be effective January 1, '22. Doing both at the same time, one referendum.
So the question is 20 and 21, 22?
Right, if you do it in 20, if you do it in 20, as Mr. Wilson pointed out-
Yes, I understand.
You're dealing with a presidential election and all bets are off.
Right.
You know, it, it could be that a, that a huge voter turnout is beneficial to us.
Right.
Some, some, some political consultant would, would probably look into a crystal ball and give you a read.
Sure.
But otherwise-
So there's two options.
But if you, if you do it- Right, and if you do it in '21, you would not, you would not be capturing that, that little difference.
If it's the previous year.
Yes, you would just be doing the referendum for, for an operational millage going forward. And I believe, I believe that those are capped at, generally capped at four years.
Right, the only thing that I'm a little worried about personally is that timing of losing the one in 2020 and then never having a shot for 2021. That's kinda, and I don't know if that's real because I'm not a consultant. Same one, right?
Yeah, same referendum.
That's what I'm saying.
But if, but if you do it in 2021, there really wouldn't be-
Correct.
You wouldn't have that, the piece going back.
I understand that, right.
You'd just have the, the mill going forward, yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
So, let me, I mean, there are two separate issues here. One is doing a referendum and whether or not the board is interested in that. The second is if we, if we, you know, we can't, no matter what we do, there are two years we can't do anything about, it's gone. So the question is, what could we do about that third year without violating our promise? And that, that was what I was offering, you could do this without violating the promise. What I'm hearing, what I'm hearing, I think, from other board members is that they really don't want to go out until 2021. And I'm agreeing with that simply because I think that's our best opportunity to get it done.
To get it done.
The reality is, we, you know, we heard a lot about the sales taxes passing throughout the state, but not all of them passed easily. A couple of them only passed by a percentage point or two. So, you know, I, I think that using consultants and, and, and working hard is what makes that work and, and there's a lot of work to be done here, I think. So that, that's my take on it, that's my feelings about it. But I'm, I'm just offering, I think, some possibility if we wanted to do it a little bit early based on my discussion with Mr. Bridges and the consultant and Mr. Prom, Mr. Pitts.
I agree with you.
So.
Are you asking for a consensus at this time? What are you asking for today or just a discussion?
Well, yeah, yeah, how do we feel about, how do we feel about that as a board? Number one, do we, are we interested in a referendum as a board? Is that something we want to, we would be willing to move forward with?
Well, I, I think I mentioned this last work session, we've got quite a few employees struggling.
Yes.
And I don't see any relief from any other place but right here, and I think that's been the plan all along is to have local folks take the brunt of that monetary difference. So I'm all for it.
To be, and then would we want to put it on the ballot in '20 or '21 would be the next question?
I would say '21.
I'd say '21. We're not risking '20 ballot yet.
Right.
So what I'm hearing is '21, which-
I would say, I would not want to risk it. I would say that it's effective in '22, putting it on '21.
Yep.
Okay, and that, so that takes out the little piece that-
Right.
Now it's, you know, we're doing the full, full board. And I guess the other part of that is then, you know, for my, this is just my take on it. What, what I would offer is that we want to recover the rollback that we've seen the state impose on us over time, which amounts to about $60 million a year. Is that, is that a fair statement, Mr. Prom? Okay. And I think, I think that has the best possibility of selling to, to our constituents because we can say, look, we just want to go back to where we were 10 years ago, right?
I need some numbers, this, this is very nebulous, so $60 million?
Rollback from 10 years ago.
From 10 years ago, what it was at, 4.21 or whatever it was.
The millage was probably two mills higher than what it is this year.
Or capital.
Right.
Or capital.
So that gap, you'd get about 40 million for a mill.
But we're capped it, we can only ask for a mill.
I think you only ask for a mill.
Well, I'm sorry, I missed the last one.
Well, we're not asking for a mill. What we're asking for is to recover rollback. So I, I see a distinction there. Is that a distinction, Mr. Bridges?
Or need Wes?
Yeah, I, I suspect at, at some point, you're going to want to retain the services of a consultant-
There we go.
-who specializes in this.
We have time.
Right.
Right, and, and, and that way you, you not only, you not only set out what's possible or what, what's allowable, but get a feel for what is actually doable.
Yeah.
Ms. Superintendent, Madam Superintendent, could we get us the numbers maybe at the next work session to see what it would mean? Okay, thank you.
Please.
And we'll put that on the, we can look at the numbers to see what that would mean in terms of dollars.
But we would talk about the process on this for a long time.
Yeah, we can talk about process. Okay, are we, we good with that? Everybody good with that?
I think I saw Mr. Wilson's last thing.
That was my question, is if we can, before, you know, any of us giving consensus, I feel like we need to see numbers of what we're going for and-
And what's allowed.
Yeah. And what legally we can-
What's legally?
Because if you, if you look at that statute, if it's as opaque to you as it is to me, there, there's a litany of things that are possible. But it, when you look at what districts have done, it's clear that they've made political decisions of what to actually try to accomplish. You can't do all of it. Politically, you can't. You just, you have to figure out which, which one it is you want to go after and how much, and, and then put your nose to that grindstone.
And I'm happy to reach out to the former consultant and ask the questions that were asked here today, but I would defer to someone else if somebody else would like to talk to a different consultant, I certainly would.
Can you bring that, I mean, can we have a question and answer?
To your presentation.
Yeah.
Well, I could, I mean, there, there's going to be a cost to that.
It's okay.
Can the district fund that, Mr. Bridges? Okay.
It's an important decision.
Madam Superintendent, are you okay with that?
Mike, yeah, Mike, join us. Buy him lunch.
Well, he's coming to get a contract to be the consultant, maybe there were-
Well, but once you go that route, the district can't fund that consultant.
Right, right, when they're, when they're, once they're advocating, the consultant works with the pack and, well, once they're advocating. But if we're, we're just trying to get a, a sense of what, of what is possible.
Yep.
Are there any more questions?
And you're welcome for muddying all that water.
So we'll, we'll have that information starting for the next work session and probably just be ongoing since we're going to work through that. So Ms. Corong has the next item that's up, which is going to be on the COPS.
Yeah, good afternoon. So at the next meeting, we're going to bring two renewals of our COPS, our variable rate, the swaps that we have. So they are coming due in the next couple of months, but we've asked the banks to roll them for one more year. Same rates, no cost increase. Because the, in conversations with our financial advisor, they think there's an opportunity that we could terminate the swaps and go to traditional fixed rate. So we needed a little time, the banks agreed to carry those for another year. We're going to go out and look at that and what the cost is. It could be a savings, it could be a break even, or it could cost a little bit, and we'll bring that back to you. But it would allow us to get out of all of our swaps or those variable rate. We've done that once before, back in 2012, we got rid of one of them. This is looked favorably on, with our rating agencies when we do. So if we could eliminate some of those, we'll try to do that. If they come back and the pricing isn't that good, we will come back to you with, we will continue the swaps and then we'll price them up for a few more years. So we will bring that at the next meeting, and it is just a, what we'll bring is just a one-year renewal on the two. It allows us to go out and get pricing on terminating. And if we can't, or we don't think it's a good deal to terminate, we'll just bring back a longer-term deal on swaps. So that's all I have to update, yes.
So it says the district's FA, I assume that is financial advisor has advised.
Yes.
Who is it?
PFM.
You knew I was going to ask.
Yep.
So at what point did they become our official? Because you were going to bring that back, because we were going to have a discussion regarding that. And we never have, I don't think.
Yeah, we brought it back.
We did bring it back?
We did.
So they're officially our advisor now?
Yes.
Do we have like a contract or something with them that we could be privy to? I don't believe I've ever seen that.
We need a copy.
Could you, I would appreciate it, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Wilson?
Ms. Run, does this eliminate any of our derivatives?
That's the two, we have two, we have three left.
Okay.
One is, one, there's only 346,000. We're going to have, when that rolls, we're not going to, we're not going to refinance that, we'll just pay that off. And then we'll leave these two. And if we get rid of these two, well, then we won't have any more.
No more derivatives?
Correct. But we don't know what the price is, but it's been a very hot market.
Increase our credit rating, lower interest rates, more money for the district.
Any other questions?
Okay, the next item, thank you, Ms. Corong.
Yeah.
The next item we have is two new job descriptions from senior manager ESC, Ms. Fortney. And, thank you.
Good afternoon. Before you today is a new job description for a senior manager ESC, curriculum charter and private schools. This, the cost for this position was included in the staffing plan that you will vote on later today, but we just needed to get this, the actual position out there, the job description for you to approve.
I was thinking, can you kind of talk about, please do, for this, please?
Sure, we have, under IDEA, there are obviously requirements to service all of our special disabilities in charter schools and in private schools. And we currently have 56 out of 90 private schools in Polk County that have affirmed all the services from us, that equated last year to 703 students. We expect this year for it to easily go above 800. Then amongst all of our charters, we have about 1,800 students in charter schools that we are responsible for facilitating services for. So currently, right now, we only have one staffing specialist for each of those areas, and that's the only support that we provide directly to those schools. And we need to be able to have some administrative support there to be able to collaborate with those principals, those sites and those things. So we are funding this out of our grant, and that's all.
Ms. Fortney?
So I just want to make sure, this is like another unfunded mandate then, basically, from, since we have to take over the private schools and-
The private, the IDA grant that we receive-
Right.
-through the state from the federal government does out, have a portion of it that you must spend on private schools, depending on the number of students that they have. However, you're not allowed to spend any of that funding on the administrative side of things. You're only allowed to spend it directly on the students.
So-
So we're using our public part of it out of IDA to provide that administrative support.
So that's a kind of a yes?
Kind of a yes, kind of, yeah.
Just wanted to put that out there in the universe.
Yeah.
Ms. Philson, Ms. Miller?
It might be here somewhere, but what is the, the overall cost for this position's benefits and all? Do you all have that?
Well, the cost is, it starts at 56,000 and we can take a third of that for benefits. So that would be another 15, 15,000, so probably about 60, 62, overall, per position.
Ms. Miller?
Just had a question about collaboration. We struggle sometimes with our staffing specialists in that collaboration point with our private and charter. And this clearly is for the charter that we're the LEA of, this isn't for char, for all charter, right?
This is not for LEA.
Right, this is for everyone else that we determine this money for.
Correct.
But the collaboration piece to this, I, you know, this is, this is that mid-level management piece that can give suggestions and go in, but are they going to work closely with our charter representative to make sure these, and hold these schools accountable to their charter contracts?
That's, yes, that's what we need. We need some more boots on the ground to be able to reach that out and do that.
Because we have a staffing specialist who was trying to manage all of this, and it was too much-
Correct.
And the schools were not receptive of her. But if they know that this person will report to our charter staff that could impact their contract if they're not implementing what their contract, I would like to just be assured of that piece, that we are going to hold them accountable to their contracts. We've not been able to do that, probably because they were overworked.
So this, this role would report directly to Ms. Taylor, the ESE director, but we do work hand in hand with Candy, Amato and with Carolyn Bridges on those charters. So that's what we would do, is we would have that person, you're exactly right, that would be able to step in even beyond a staffing specialist and have those conversations about what's in the contract, what's required, this is what we have to do, and be able to get into those schools more than we're able to at the moment to look at those things.
Do we just turn funding over to them, like similar to the site-based management we have with our own schools? Or do we follow the dollars to make sure they're being used on their students?
For the charter schools?
Yeah.
The charter schools are required to submit to us a plan of how they intend to spend their allocated funding under IDA. We review that plan, as long as it meets the requirements of what IDA dollars can be spent on, then it's approved, they spend their own money, they invoice us, and then we refund them and reimburse them through their invoices with their allocation. So they don't, they do not just get their money and have free will to spend it. We have a process where we make sure that they're spending it appropriately.
And would the public or parents or students go to this person if there's a discrepancy on the services or what's being provided?
They could, yes, that'd be another resource, I'm, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Oh, no, I was just going to say, I know Ms. Miller's been so very much involved with ESC and I just kind of want to hear her thoughts about it.
Mr. Townsend?
It occurs to me something that might be very helpful, it might be very helpful for us to do it for ourselves, but to assess each charter and private school on an annual basis, that doesn't be any kind of detailed report, but we can give them a grade, you know, are, are you ABC, whatever, on your, on your compliance? I would like to see that report.
So, it's funny, you mentioned that. We have two things in place. We've been working on a monitoring process for all of our schools compliance-wise to be able to provide those types of supports and those types of reports so that we have a better handle on that. That would reach out to the charter schools as well, they'd be required to do the same things. And then at the same time, Candy recently reached out to us to develop a specific process for the charter school reviews that come up every year, specifically to the ESE pieces and what they're required to do. So we're, we're developing that so that we go into a couple of schools, I think it's October. At some point, we have to start going in, we'll have that written out of what are we looking for as far as our contract, what compliance pieces need to be in place, all of those things, we're exactly working on that right now.
Well, just, so let me guess what, at the end, let me say, once a year, the board could get that report, or the public could get that report and say, ex-charter school or ex-private, private school is doing a good job, a mediocre job, or a bad job of complying? I mean, I mean, can we do something that simple and?
Yes, we could do that.
I would, I would like to see, to see that. And we should apply to ourselves too, if we're, if we're going to do it.
Right.
Right.
Ms. Fortney?
That was my question, and who, who is responsible for those monitoring forms on the school level?
What I'm talking about specifically is IEP compliance, ESE compliance piece. So at the school level, that would be whoever the principal is dedicated to overseeing that. Some of them dedicate their LEA facilitator, some of them assign it, the LEA facilitator to some of the work, but then the administrator AP is responsible for really looking at it and making sure what changes need to be.
Well, you know where I'm about to go with that, because some of- Because some of our elementary schools, yes, don't even have a counselor slash LEA facilitator. You know, they're, they're wearing every hat. And to add something else might just...
Well, I can tell you that what I've known to work in the past is the process that we're envisioning and still working on requires an administrative level of implementation and oversight. Because ultimately, your school-based leadership is responsible for everything on the campus. So that's who would be ultimately responsible for answering to any issues that are there. 10 IEPs are out of compliance at FTE time. The ultimate person that's gotta answer to that is the principal. And that's where we'd be going down the road.
I'd like...
If there's a major issue.
You know what my concern...
Yes, ma'am.
But I think that might help answer the disconnect between principals understanding what the compliance is for ESC. Because many of them, their 10 IEPs or 12 IEPs, you know, out of compliance, and they have no knowledge of how any of it works. So I think giving them back the response, which it should have been, legally it is, but we've always, you know, kind of diverted to other people. They need to be aware of what's happening in those schools. And some of them are just not.
And I'll, and I'll say, they're very receptive to that. I mean, I work with them, they are receptive, they wanna know, they understand. And when issues come up, they're on it and they...
Right. I just think in the past, it's not been part of what they were over. I mean, or what they can, usually an AP or someone else was delegated. But they are the last person, they are the responsible for all of those students. And they need to know that.
Mr. Townsend?
I guess, just to, to clarify on my, my little report card thing. But like, our schools have a lot of oversight. They have, you know, stuff comes up to us, stuff comes up to you. We don't have much of a look into what the charter schools and the, and the private schools are doing. And if we have some sort of oversight mechanism for that, it would be nice to see. So I mean, I'm less concerned about applying the specifics of, of any kind of report to our, to our folks, as I am about starting with an actual report on, on charter. And so, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna dump a duty on somebody. I was hoping that he assessed that.
That's this role, this new position, that's gonna be part of the role is to be able to do some of that work.
Okay.
Thank you. You had two informational items. Item six was the UNICEF, I think, no, Maria's not here. It's out there. Are there any questions? Dr. Aix is here for that, for the grant. And then I, Mr. Wilson?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know.
Oh, okay. And then item seven was the Head Start. And I believe Maddie is back there, the Head Start. Mr. Wilson?
So, Ms. Frieda, I don't want to put you on the spot. But if you don't mind, could you come forward, please, in case there are any questions? At the last audit we had, I promised the auditors that you would be available for questions periodically throughout the year.
Thank you for the interview.
So if anyone has any questions, and Ms. Friede, when I go back before the auditors, I can say, yes, we implemented that program.
Ms. Reynolds?
Do you, how many students do we have enrolled in Head Start this year?
Well, I knew that was gonna be the first question. So let me share with you that Head Start is not our only early childhood program. We are operating now in preschool programs, three major programs, one after-school program on Florida, First Start for birth to three. But our three major VPK, three and four-year-old programs are VPK. And right now, in our AM, PM, and mixed age groups for VPK, we have 493 students enrolled. I call them BIC, button chair. 493. We have 405 in our Title I VPK classrooms. And we have 942 at Head Start. That number will go up in the next few days. So we just have just under 1,900 students around the county. 64 different schools, 105 different classrooms.
Do you know what our waitlist is currently?
We always have a waitlist. But I feel it's my responsibility to share with those families other sources of services for their children. So I do want to tell you about an issue that we're facing that we've never faced before. Our four areas that we have found are migrant families and families that may be affected by the political climate that you are well aware of. Our South Winter Haven area, Frostbrough area, Kingsford, Mulberry area, excuse me. And of course, the Point Sienna, Hines City area. Those schools have experienced this year, for the first time ever, a significant drop in requests for services. When we do our face-to-face conversations, many times our parents are willing to talk until they get to, can we have your income to determine your income levels? There's a significant drawback. I'm, I'm concerned that those areas will continue to feel the political push and the fear of being deported.
Mr. Townsend?
Is, I mean, is that a different process than you've gone through in, in the, in the past?
Yeah, the process for us to determine income eligibility for the federal program has not changed, you know, significantly. A little paper here and a little paper back.
Okay.
The issue is, parents are not, one family told me, I'm not gonna turn in everybody who lives in my house because I'm afraid.
Right.
Knowing that, it then gives them deportation possible.
Right, I mean, I, I, I wasn't sure if there was a formal requirement that had made documentation...
No. I wish it was that easy, because then we can rebut, but...
It's more climate thing.
Yes, it's more climate than procedure. Yes?
Ms. Fortney?
It, it's the same concern I've had with the census coming up of the county. Because we're, we're still responsible, gonna be responsible for those kids in a classroom somewhere.
Yes.
Yes.
Income eligibility does not count for kindergarten.
Exactly. And, you know...
I do need to share that the funding letter did give us the amounts, you have all the amounts there in your packet. And we were glad to see that our program has not been, you know, the monies are not diminished at all. So we're at the same funding, of course. Again, it's just barely to cover our necessities. And rules continue to grow, of course. And the needs of our children continue to grow. I know that there are children in our classrooms, I had two today. Yesterday, I had two 911 calls. Parents did not know that their children were allergic to certain foods. But when exposed to a wider variety of foods and food, that occurs. And the second issue that we had today, again, sixth, seventh day of school, and we have lots of behavioral issues. And that just continues to... Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Maddie.
That concludes my portion. I believe Cheryl will take a 15-minute break at this time.
We'd like to get started again, please. So at this time, the next item on the agenda is review of the school board agenda this evening. We have Ruby Mendoza leading us in the flag. No special recognitions. So we have three sets of minutes. Any questions, comments, corrections to the minutes? Madam Superintendent, we have some new administrators?
Yes, there are two.
On the consent agenda, items C9 through C11, any questions, comments?
Just the various, there's a couple of things with Westwood and then another thing on the regular agenda with Westwood. I was just curious, why, why, is it just the amount that they're structured that way?
One is the, and Angela can explain the architect, and one is the amount.
Right, one is the one, the, the contract to the architect, and the other one is the fee.
So I just, I was just curious, what made one on the, the regular agenda versus...
The other one has a monetary value, I guess, that's why it's on regular. And we consent to it.
Just the West. It's for the same, it's essentially the same thing, right? It's the same project.
Same project.
Okay, we have some donations, of course. And we're always very grateful for, for our partners in the community who are willing to help us, help each of our schools out. It takes us to items C20 through C28, which is the remainder of the consent agenda. Any questions, comments about anything else on the consent agenda?
Comment, C28 about the MOU with the library cooperative? Y'all know me, I always say read, read, read. And I mean, we have the best library cooperative. So to see this happen with our, with our schools, this is wonderful. So thank you to everyone involved.
It takes us to the regular agenda items R, we'll do R, R29 through R32. Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, well, I could probably ask them the same things I'm asking.
Go.
I just, on the, let's, can we talk about the LSI contract for a second? I mean, I don't think we've talked about that at all. I guess first, first of all, we probably need to make it clear tonight that, for anybody who didn't know, that DOE clearly rejected Lake Wales Charter as an external operator. That was an important thing to get in writing. Thank, thank you for whoever got that in, in writing.
Amen.
It helps clarify things. I think the, the description of this reads a lot more like, what is the word? Reads, reads a lot more like lens interpretation was before when we had this discussion. Like, this, this seems like a lot more in control than educational directions was. Not, I mean, it doesn't really matter one way or the other to me. I just wanna know which, which, which it is. I mean, are they, do they have more power than, than, than educational directions did?
It's the same. And, and the, the state board actually want us to have more of a collaboration with the external operators. And I've already been working and talking with LSI members as, as far as collaboration. So it's, it's, it's the same, as far as us working together. We've already been talking staff and different things of that nature already, currently.
Ms. Fortney?
I just wanted to clarify that this LSI is the same LSI that we, okay. I just wanna make sure.
We already have them doing professional development. They have two sides of the house. But I'll also say that LSI had the highest performance rating with DOE when they vetted them and approved them of the other school districts that they serve as an external operator, so, as well.
I think Ms. Cunningham had some comments?
Yeah, but not related to that. So if you have, go ahead.
I, I really wanted to get Superintendent Bird's take on how we can look to see a difference between ed directions and LSI as far as the other schools, not just McLaughlin. But are they contracted to work on all 20, whatever?
LSI.
Yeah.
They're, they're contracted to work in, as an external operator for McLaughlin.
Only, but I wanted to clarify that.
That's correct.
And then we still have ed directions at our other...
Ed directions actually had, when this all initiated, had a two-year contract. Just like that was where the requirement said that they have a two-year contract. So this is the last year of that contract. So they still have schools that they were under contract and they were working with. And Griffin was the other one that was up on the external for ed directions. And they're still working with them. So actually, you have ed directions on one side, and then you have LSI working with some, with them, McLaughlin.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Townsend, did you have some comments about that?
Yeah, just a quick, quick, quick question. So, so this, this 1.2 is entirely from McLaughlin?
That's McLaughlin. And I would say that it's, the first one is 610,000 a year. The second year could be less than that. And when they make the C, they'll provide a lower, less, a model that's less expensive because of that. Also, the state actually imposed with the new external operators that if the schools do not make it, there's a holdback. So you'll see, I think it's 110,000, I might be off by that. Where if they do not make it, that amount is held back from them out of the 610,000.
Do you know, do you know what the personnel is that we're buying in this? I mean, like, like, what is, what is the actual, is it, I'm sorry.
They have coaches that they put on the ground and, that will be on-site at the school. They're actually on-site.
Ms. Cunningham?
Okay, I have a procedural question. On the regular agenda, I've noticed there's more and more things being placed there. I thought at one time that if it was a value greater than 250,000, but like the one I just looked at, 50,000 here, 45, 48 there, why? I'm trying to understand. And also, all the recommendations for admin, non, and temp, all those are being moved down. So has there been a shift in how we handle these items instead of being on the consent agenda?
So I would tell you that we noticed at our meeting at cabinet, we had a discussion, and we had some things ending up. And this is where personnel is putting, placing them on the regular. And we're gonna make sure they're on the set. If it's over 250, it comes to the regular at that point.
Right.
But we did have a discussion, because we're noticing things that are kind of ending up on the regular agenda.
Correct, it shouldn't be.
And I'll tell you that the, the human resources, Mr. Townsend asked us.
Blame me for that one.
But once we have the implementation of the new system that we're going toward board docs, you have to literally pull those items to have them at that point placed on there, on the agenda. And we'll, we'll get into training of that when we come. But we did notice stuff less than 250 were ending up on regular.
Right.
And we haven't asked that question.
You have been too?
Yeah, we have been, this, how staff is kind of putting it on there. We're gonna have to start going back pulling it.
Oh, I didn't know. I thought that was maybe something that you had decided to change. That's why I'm asking.
No.
I have one on, it doesn't really need to be on there. I feel that it shouldn't be on there.
Okay, I'm just, so I'm not crazy. I was looking through that, and I'm like, 50,000, why?
Then we have some new staff, and we have some staff that we're trying to train and put in.
Okay, that's fine, super. Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
I think Ms. Fields had a question?
I do have a question. And Ms. Jackie, you might not be able to answer it right now. But at the last work session, the turnaround school supplemental services application, I was looking at all of the expenses that's gonna be required. It's like 4 million dollars, I believe, along with the 610. Where are the dollars coming for the supplemental services, SSI?
No, those funds are actually coming in from the state. And that's what was explained last time. And just read an email, we're gonna have to go back and do some more adjustments, it's like. And Maria's at the conference right now. But those are not coming out of our budget, if that's what you're thinking. They're coming out of jobs, they're not.
So altogether, we're spending in excess of 5 million dollars?
What's...
When I say we, I'm talking about the investment, even if it's not coming...
Into the turnaround schools?
Yes, in the turnaround schools.
What, UNICEF and TISA, do you have a total?
More than that, Ms. Fields.
Yeah.
There's more than that.
Because TISA's what's...
TISA's there, opposite to schools. And that's on this line directly to us.
From the state.
And earmarked for those schools. So that's...
So maybe somebody can answer that later? I would be interested in what is the total that's been invested in the turnaround schools?
Along with the EPOs and all. We, we can get those, Maria, and get the total dollars.
It'd be interesting to see what that looks like.
Okay, well, we can get where their, where the dollars are coming from.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Reynolds?
I didn't mind, I'll wait till later.
Okay.
It was on the agenda.
No, I was, I was, my point in pulling out the HR stuff a while back was just to remind everybody that we do have a role in voting on, on personnel. That was, that was all.
And from a, from a logistics perspective, we used to do that under the consent agenda so that by the time we got to new administrators, they were already approved. And now we're, we're introducing new administrators before they actually approved by the board. So from a practical perspective, we probably need to move that, the admin recommendations.
Yeah, that's fine.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Move back to the consent agenda.
I just wanted to be a fan.
And that, that way we...
Good catch.
When we announce it.
I wondered about that.
And then we didn't vote for you.
You can go sit down now.
Yeah, you can go see you later.
Okay, HR recommendations, we have items R33 through R37. Any questions, comments? Ms. Fortney?
R37. R thirty-seven. So, I, I just want to be clear, there's a, I can tell you the exact page, I think I already have it pulled up. I ask, it, it would help, be very helpful for me if I had names attached to some of these organizational charts. It would, it would have been very, very helpful. And I'm just going to make a general comment because there's a, there's a couple of things here that, you know, I'm looking at. And, you know, I feel like we're on a budgetary cliff period, and I, I still have a hard time with the optics of a chief of staff. I have a hard time understanding, I thought we already had a director of discipline. And again, it would have helped me if I had names to associate with those positions. And then overall, as I went through and looked at all one hundred and eighty-nine pages, Ms. Portius, Lord mercy.
You're welcome.
Yeah. You know, we are, all employees are doing more than less, and, and again, this may be my new, being a new board member, but it just appears to me that some of these positions. I mean, first off, I have no idea what they really, really do every day, but it just appears that some, it, it's like a, a, for lack of a better word, a promotion. It, within the, the system, the organizational system. And, you know, I, I just feel like if, if somebody gets a promotion, then everybody should get a, a promotion, if that includes a pay increase. You know, the unfund and then refund, and I don't even know how you keep up with that. But, you know, I, I just, I, I, I cannot in good conscience, knowing that we have folks that are struggling to make ends meet. Even, we all do more with less, and, and I just feel like this whole thing, you know, like, even our, Mr. Joe's old spot is now a director, right? That saved us money, because wasn't he a senior director?
He was a senior, well, yes.
And again, this may be my naivety, but do directors have secretaries or, no, no director has secretaries, okay. Wait a minute.
Let me say, some of them do.
Okay. But it's the same job description, pretty much?
I'm sorry, yes.
See, so it feels.
It does vary, let me say this, the duties do vary and the responsibilities do vary depending on, quite frankly, who they're assigned to. So, Dr. H says that the director of ESOL does have a secretary. But I know that none of my directors in HR have secretaries, so I guess it's.
Okay.
And finance has some as well.
Do you see my confusion though?
Oh, I'm sorry, finance does not have any.
Okay, but that, you know, and I, it would just be so helpful and, and for me personally, that I could track like, oh, this person's going here. It, it would just be very, very helpful for me in, in the future. And then, when I started doing my homework, it said that it would be provided. In section eight at the board meeting, which to me was kind of late.
So, we do normally provide it usually on or after the board meeting, and the reason is, this is our busiest hiring time. So, from literally July or last board meeting to this board meeting, we are just steadily processing.
Six hundred are here, right?
Seven hundred and ninety-five of last week. And so, case in point, I think we had a hundred and thirty people come in the, in our office last week just to do fingerprints and yamas and things like that. So, my staff is kind of doing double duty right now. Yes, you will get, I have talked to Mrs. Dole about it, and so you're supposed to be provided this, this afternoon, hopefully at the board meeting. If that changes, I'll certainly let you know.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. But again, you can, maybe see my confusion. I mean, I don't even know.
If we can't provide in advance, this, Mrs. Portman, we will certainly do that, however, this hiring season was just an unusual one for us.
But it's probably, like, if we don't get some money out to them, it might be worse next year, if, if you know what I mean. So, I don't know. And again, back to the senior director, discipline is a new job description. I, I thought we already had that.
Yeah, but something. Yeah, but director, that's part of the, the behavior plan.
So, that's two different jobs.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, for the town county.
Yes.
Any, any further comments, questions about items R thirty-three through R thirty-seven? Ms. Reynolds?
I was just going to recommend, if, would it be possible for you to send the previous years out, just so that we can, I think that may help with the names that a lot of this level hasn't moved. So, that may help with just seeing who has each, it would be a different document, but it may help.
Yes.
From last year, so that she can see that.
Because I can follow Ms. Portius's thing, but it, it would help if I, like, I know, I know Paula Dole, but I don't even know what she does. Does that make sense?
Right, but.
Right, but where, right, right.
Will she go up, or will she go sideways, or will she, yeah.
So, I think we, what we can do, Ms. Portius, is send the previous one out when we send the new one, even though, knowing that some of those will change. So, you don't get confused, we'll make sure we highlight the current year and that you know that's the new one without the names, and the old, old one has the names.
Does that make sense? That makes sense to me, thank you.
Well, with the increase of, you know, student needs, population, and all the things that are going on, one of the things we just want to remember that we are still the second, I think the second lowest in terms of personnel at the district level. So, to, to really support and lead and do the things you need to do, eventually you, you need leaders of personnel to be able to support schools and support. So, it is a very tough dynamic.
Second lowest in?
Administrative cost.
Administrative cost in the state.
I get all that.
So, and I, and I certainly understand it's a very tough situation.
Is that, is that in total, or?
Or the seven large.
On, on, per, per student basis?
That's on a per student basis.
Okay.
The percent of administrative cost on a per student basis, third year in a row we've been second place in state.
Do you have a document?
It's in the PowerPoint. There's a slide. I am not questioning any, anything else except it is hard to follow.
Okay, Ms. Millie?
No, it is in.
Moving on?
This is kind of procedural, what we were talking about before, because I sent an email out. On, I would like to see, just to describe what that new position is, that chief of staff, because there was a ton of conversation at the last work session. I, like, in the future, I would like to see, like, some kind of follow-up to that, because then it just landed on the board agenda without, like, a follow-up to that long conversation. And I know it was kind of discussed that there's multiple needs, this person will take care of multiple areas. But I know I need a better understanding of what that position will be doing, so we can look for them for that guidance.
Let me add to that, because I think what generated the conversation was Ms. Portius's explanation of some of the duties and responsibilities.
Right.
Was not on the.
Job description.
Right, did you end up adding that?
No, I'm not ended up, I'm not adding anything to the job description itself.
Okay.
So, so I will say, and I know Ms. Portius has looked at the other districts across the state and see how we line that up within them too. And she can talk about our actual job description, how it lines up with the other large districts. But I can tell you that that job is actually to assist us in with the efficiencies and the academic improvements in our district as well. So, we can continue moving forward with our achievement. You know, I've been here in this role now, how many years? Three, four years? And so, we've been looking at what we're doing. And as you look at, we're the seventh largest district, and we're still having more things to come about that we're having to do. We want to make sure that we're able to continue in the academic improvements, but also, we want to start addressing the efficiencies that we have within our district. And that's what, that person will help us do those things as well. We also looked at other districts, how that chief of staff lines up. I remember you said, what about a chief of operations?
Right.
We looked at that. Other districts have chief of staff, chief of schools, chief of operations, they have all of those lined up in large districts as well. But right now, I think we're not ready to add another one, we're just looking at this one now. To help with the efficiencies that we're having, not only just between here at the district and in the schools, but between our communities as well. And I like Ms. Portius, because I did ask her to do a deeper dive with the other districts, and we have a few moments, to see how that lines up, because I knew that was a concern I heard as well. What does it look like in other districts with that position?
But, but a key thing that I think Mr. Townsend pointed out at the last meeting that stuck with me is the relationship, managing the relationship of the stakeholders. Because right now, that's lying very heavily, unfortunately, on you, but yet you're pulled in so many different directions. So, when that came about, I was really excited, because I think that's something that's huge, but I don't think I saw that in there, that's why I'm asking. Where, and I know there's, and anything else the superintendent assigns, I get that in any, or, or, yeah, I get it.
And I can tell you that as that being reported position up to me, that's one of the things I'm looking at, that person working with stakeholders as well.
Right.
Um, if that's a word we had to add in there tonight, we could as far as looking at the collaboration with the stakeholders.
But that's procedural, but that's procedural, I mean, Mr. Chairman, you've run the meetings, but we had a long conversation about things we were going to need to see, and then we didn't see anything, and then it's on the board agenda.
So, I think in the future, no matter what it is, if it's that kind of discussion, there needs to be some follow-up, because you understood it could have been changed, but there was no change.
No.
And, you know, I just, procedure, you know, like, if somebody was to change positions or change, then if they read that job description, they're going to imply by listening to this meeting that it was different than what's written.
So, here's my question, does this have to be approved tonight? Can we bring this back?
It's in the org chart currently.
Well, isn't the staffing plan?
It's in the staffing plan.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. Pulling the staffing, does the staffing plan have to be approved tonight, or can we approve it?
It can, but you can take that one item out, and then, if, if we have to, and then add it back in.
Mr. Bird, yes?
You, you have that flexibility, unless you've got a statutory deadline, you've got flexibility.
But here's what I'm hearing, I'm hearing that, what I'm, think I'm hearing is that what we would like next time is when we have those discussions, to bring it back to us, so we get a chance to, to review those things and make sure we're, we're in agreement before we move forward to the vote. Is that, is that what?
Or just email, after, just a quick, you know. But I don't want to hold it up, though, I think it's way too important.
Mr. Chair, is this being a position that we're looking at that will be working with, with me? I just asked Ms. Portius if we can go ahead and include that for tonight, work amended with stake, working with stakeholders and in there.
The efficiency piece.
And that, and that will be in there.
And it's, can I say that it's in there?
Ms. Cunningham?
It's at the top, it says serves as liaison for community business and governmental initiatives that support public education. So, I don't know if you can add stakeholders in the efficiency piece.
Yeah, I don't think the efficiency piece was in.
No.
Which was something that I was.
Just tweak it.
That's what we both discussed.
Yeah, we talked about that.
And let us see it.
And then I will provide it to you via hard copy and email before the board meeting.
Perfect, so we can keep it in the vote tonight. I think that's important.
Ms. Portman?
But you're saying next.
So, I understand everything y'all just said, but I still would not be able to support this position based upon our budgetary concerns that we have already talked about. And I, I understand we all have to do more with less, maybe this just isn't the time, I don't know. And I guess I'm going to be on an island, that's fine, but I've gotten not one positive comment from anybody who I know or don't know about this position in order for me to support it. So, I, I will not be able to support that position.
Ms. Fields?
I would like to hear from Ms. Tejra on, or share the information, what other districts have in place.
So, in looking at the other districts and during the research, as requested by Mrs. Bird, Broward essentially does have the same position as the chief of staff, and it's organized the same. A lot of the duties and the responsibilities are in fact the same meeting it does, it's a liaison between the board and the superintendent. And also, it does direct operations as well. However, that is not as clear in the job description. What I'm finding, and I actually looked at the top ten, so Broward has it, Hillsborough has one, Orange has one, Palm Beach has one, Lee surprisingly has one. The smaller of the top ten districts do not, so Seminole does not, Osceola has some, well, Osceola has one, it's, it's the chief of staff, but it's of teaching, leading, and learning. Nonetheless, in looking at all of them, what I have surmised is that they kind of vary in duties and responsibilities. But what was striking to me is that because it is an executive level position, it does not get as detailed as we have our job description. It is not quite as minute in terms of what the duties are, because a lot of that is really left up to the superintendent and or the CEO of the organization. And so, it really just depends on what you all want to do as a board and how Mrs., what Mrs. Bird would like as well. As a CEO, in terms of directing this position and what you all would like in there, I think, quite frankly, from an HR perspective, the more vague we, the more, the way you have to direct them. Because it, it really allows her the power and the flexibility to do what she needs to do.
I would, that was part one.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, part two is, we've been having discussion, I think, among, I know I've had discussion with Ms. Jackie, I don't bother to tell, about the need to have something comparable in the district for the last couple of years. And each time, it's like, well, we really need the position, but we can't afford it. We can't, we don't want to bring it, and we can't add it. And I think we're at a different place right now. We're running a billion-dollar corporation, and I think that we have to look at the fact that we need to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place to provide what we need to meet our mission, which is student first. And Ms., Ms. Jackie, and I say this all the time, she is an external operator. She knows the work of turnaround schools. She knows it back her hand, I mean, she just has it, that's a talent that she has. She needs to be able to get out and to go into the schools and to work alongside the external operators and the staff. And she's not able to do that, from what I'm understanding, because she is having to be pulled in so many places. I think somebody just mentioned that, I don't remember who it was. And so, to me, this is an opportunity for her to be able to get out of the building and to get into the schools and to help do the work, so that we can move our schools and we can meet the needs of our students. I don't know when it is ever going to be a good time to add a position like this. I think we, personally, I just think we have to just step out and do it, and if it doesn't work after the first year, we can go back and revisit it. If it needs to be tweaked, we can go back and revisit it. But I think that Ms. Jackie needs to support. And, and we want, we want her to be successful, if she's successful, everybody else, the students, everybody ultimately will be successful. So, I will be supporting this position.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms. Millie?
Thank you for doing that research. I have Broward counties here, because I went and pulled them, and you're right, they're all very different. And I think we decided last time, I think most people were in support of, we needed, Mrs. Bird needed additional support, what it looked like, because I know we talked about it, could be two other people, could be three other people. I think the two, the overtone that I heard was efficiency. If we tell the stakeholders that we're not just hiring someone to add another salary, we're hiring someone to improve the efficiency of this district. That I think it's a better sell, and it, to me, as a taxpayer, I can see that, because I want to know that it's, we're running the most efficient process we can on a one-point-seven-billion-dollar budget. And I think we heard that at the last, I don't know that anybody was against the support, it was more of what, how it sells. So, I don't know if you could come up creatively with a more generalized statement of what the person would do, so you're not listing, you know, all of the different things, because you said that was, would impair, you know, the description. But you're right, there is no other district, the top ten, no one's looks the same. They're all very different. And so, I would want to support the superintendent in a role, the stakeholder management, and an efficiency manager or efficiency overview.
And if I remember the conversation, we were asking to tell us a little bit about it, and when you spoke at that last meeting, what we read and what you had said, we were like, wow, that's really great, but that's not in here. I think that's how it started, not that we want something different than what Ms. Bird wants. It was like you were saying all these keywords, stakeholder, efficiencies, but it wasn't in here, and that's why we said, hey, if that's what you're going to actually be doing, we feel like, as she said, well, how did you, however she just said that, I agree with you. Okay, I thought that was perfect.
She could, we could summarize and not list, so you don't, you're not impeding.
Right, because I think that's important, because people are going to read it, and I too support it, and I supported adding that one plus the operations person. So, I, I feel like, yes, I know that it's slim pickings out there, and it's very difficult, but to me, you have to have the right people on the bus and the right seat on the bus for this bus to take off. And we are moving in that direction, and I want us to continue. And yes, we've needed some reorganization in a while. And yes, we've needed some reorganization in a while and I'm really excited that we've come to this point. So I will be supporting this as well. I just feel those few extra words somehow in there would take care of it for me.
Ms. Reynolds?
I'll be supporting it. And I don't know if this helps at all, but I kind of looked at it as being very similar to John's position, that we would have that type of access to him, but it would be over, rather than over schools, over our business departments. And I don't, I pulled it after the last meeting, but I can't seem to find it. I don't believe his job description has in there that the, either of those things that I think how it's utilized is, and giving it that flexibility, especially this first year, is critical so that it can become the position that it needs to be. So I would be fine with supporting it without putting those things in it because it does talk about the community, the government agencies, the first sentence that you wrote on that second page. And I would hope that we're not creating any positions that are not to increase efficiency. And if we are, then we, I don't, I don't know, I don't think we need to put into every job description that this position is being created to increase efficiency. Because I'm hoping that every, if we're creating any job, it's to increase efficiency. And if a job isn't to increase efficiency, then we probably shouldn't have it. So those are my thoughts.
Well, I, I think we talked about it from the perspective of that being something that this individual would be responsible for on an overarching basis for the district. So I would like to see something in there related to that.
We don't want two John, I mean, the community, if you see two John Hills, they're gonna say, one John Hill is plenty. So we have to, so we have to. We want John Hill, but one person doing that. But one person in charge of these things, you know, they want to see a separate, what is, what is this person gonna do? And we are understaffed. And you can look in many departments and we do, we have not ran what Mr. Wilson was gonna previously do with his Blue Ribbon Group. We don't have like, we don't have that sector. It's not, we haven't funded it ever. And I think people wanna know that if they're spending this kind of money, that it's being done in the most efficient manner. That's where that came from. And I think we had, you know, that was been discussed. No, we'll have several John Hills, thank you. But that's where that came from.
Ms. Townsend?
Well, yeah, I think, I mean, one, this job will be defined entirely by its execution. Like, the person that gets hired, how well they do to do the job. That's really all, all that matters. I think I would like to leave the superintendent freedom. Like, I hear three basic things. Efficiency, stakeholder management generally, and the board specifically. Or, or, we're all, it's, it's three things that were up, because I, I asked about that last, last meeting, that are included in what's been said about what the job's going to do. I don't necessarily need that one person to do those three things. If, if, if it makes sense to give John the board and have the efficiency person focus only on the efficiency, that's fine with me. Like, I, I wanna give superintendent the, the flexibility to make what rolls up to who, work with who the person is. You know, I, I think one, one, one new position is plenty for that and, and we'll see how, how it works. But I, but I, I just, it's, hiring is going to be all of it. So that's the.
I agree with that. Okay, so items, Ms. Porter?
I have one more comment.
Okay.
And I know I'm gonna be on, on an island tonight, but I wanna know, I, I want everybody to know on this board that once we vote on it as a board, that I will support that position after the fact. But I just can't in good conscience do that because, you know, we are begging for folks to be classroom teachers, bus drivers, you name it. And the other thing I wanna, history in this county tells me that once we get that position, it will never go away. Just letting you know.
Okay. Any, Ms. Porter, any further comments? All right, so we'll move on to items. So where we are, items R. 38 through R. 42. Questions, comments? So, um, I don't recall, Ms. Wilmington, if, if the, if Ms. Matthews' item is on, is on my sheet? Or will you be making that recommendation for a motion, Ms. Matthews?
In my internal lectures report. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the audit plan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. It's on my sheet too? Okay, thank you. All right, so any other, so, so she's gonna be making the recommendation for the internal audit plan? All right, any questions, any other questions, comments about the agenda for this evening? All right, that moves us back to our work session agenda. And the next item on the agenda is the Florida School Board's Master Board Training. We need to set a date. I'm gonna apologize. Apparently, we, we have a board member who was not able to make the date we previously had, had identified. So we wanna go back and review that, some dates for the, for, for the Master Board Training. So I'm not sure where to start. Do we wanna do that in October? Does that work with everybody?
Can we?
Timber's pretty full.
Can we have Susan coordinate maybe sending out like three dates that work with you and superintendent?
Yeah, so we certainly can.
The board retreat is the first.
It seems to be more productive when Susan just sends out three dates that work for the superintendent and the chair than discussing amongst us more than.
I mean, we're really gonna be dependent on the superintendent's calendar. She's gonna be the one that's gonna be difficult. So we can do that. Can you help us with that, Ms. Superintendent? Maybe give us three dates in October? Or do we, do we have a preference as to a day? Do we prefer a Thursday, for example?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, right?
One of the day meetings, whatever meetings already ahead of that? Oh, it's all day.
Basically, we've got the first, the 15th, or the 29th.
We're already booked the first.
It's the board retreat, the first.
So we have the.
The 8th and the 22nd are already booked.
15th and the 29th. So those are really the options. And either of them work for me.
Me too. No, just the 15th and 29th.
I thought October 8th, we had work session around here. Is that?
We do.
We do.
So the 15th, or, wait, the 15th or the 29th?
Yes. I vote 29th. I don't know.
I think I would go 29th as well.
Superintendent needs to check.
Can you check the 29th?
Can you check the 29th? Ms. Fields cannot do the 29th.
Cannot?
I cannot do the 29th.
How about the 15th?
How about November 5th?
Oh.
Sorry.
Going into November?
I mean.
We have the 5th, the 19th, the 5th and the 19th. We probably don't wanna do the 26th.
No. 5th?
5th.
November.
The 5th and November?
Tentative.
Tentative?
Tentative.
That's the election day, I guess. Is that a big deal?
It's all like studies.
About this year.
It's city.
City.
That's for FSBA?
Okay, so what do you want? I'm outside the city limits.
Me too.
So is the 5th, does 5th sound okay? Does that sound good? All right, so we'll send that out and everybody can double check the calendars. And if that's problematic, we'll come back and take another look at it.
Whenever that's finalized, if somebody would love it, we'll notice it.
And then have you picked which one of these we're doing? Team Suitcase, you and your traveling, coming in for a landing, I mean, all the different.
I need an inscription.
Yeah. Haven't seen it? Susan sent this out a while ago. All the different options. Or did we already pick one for?
We've already set an agenda for this training session.
You already have? Okay.
Yes, it should have been all attached, but I can send it out.
Okay.
It's the one that was supposed to be.
Yes, on the 28th of, yeah, August.
And all of that, what's attached here, this is a full day agenda with here, the team suitcase and all.
Right, what I'm talking about.
She's, Ms. Pinkerson sent an agenda and I can, I can send that back out.
Right, that's what I was asking.
So you're gonna send that back out to the boardrooms? Okay, so we'll know what the agenda is. All right, um, before we get to board discussion, I was asked to see if I could set a meeting with the Lake Wells Charter School Board. And that's not proving to be very fruitful. I think that, and, and let me offer this, these are just my thoughts. I, I'm gonna vote for LSI this evening, but, and, and I'm very encouraged to hear that we'll have the same control as we did with educational directions. But I, I, I still don't feel, I, I still feel like there's a lot of tension. I still feel like that as a, as a county, working with them would be in the best interest of all of our students because they're our students, not just their students. And the students, we're responsible for, all of us are taking care of their students. And finding a solution to, to a very difficult situation there is only gonna come from talks. I think that's the only way we're gonna get there. Right now, I think they feel a little chastened because we've had some conversations. And each time we've had conversations, I think they feel like we were more attacking than, than willing to listen and discuss the issues. So I don't know. I'm, I'm still working to put that together. I'll do my best. But whatever we do, I, I think that in the long run, the only way we're gonna solve that problem is, is through discussion. I, I just don't, I don't think the current environment, that is a, is a very competitive environment. You would think that would be good, but in this case, I don't think that's gonna work for us. It's already proved to be rather challenging for, for our students and for their students. So I hope down the road, we can, we can find a way to have some conversations with them. And I'll continue to work on that. But I don't think it's, at this point in time, it seems, um, difficult. Ms. Townsend?
Their board won't, won't meet? They're refusing, like, the board, like, what's, what's the specifics of the difficulty?
Their board, yeah, I think that the concern is that when we have met in the past, when we had the forum in Lake Wells.
But we had meetings.
That was, that was particularly the reason why we wanted to do it.
You're, you're absolutely correct. Nevertheless, the sense is that whenever they're in front of us, whether it's their board or whomever is there, that there's, there's a tendency to be a little aggressive towards them. So their question, I think, is why? What's the point? We've, we've settled the matter. We're gonna be competitive and that's into that.
So. Here's my thought. Every time we've quote, "met with them," they're up on a platform and everybody's just talking. We're all in the audience. And last time, we're up on the platform and they're in the audience. Bottom line is, like we work with the county commission, it's called a roundtable. We all sit together, grab a cup of coffee and go, hey, what's up? Why can't we do this? Here's why we can't do this. You know what I'm saying? It was awkward last time with them wanting to know and all that back and forth and, but we gotta get the letter. But that's the reality of the world we live in. And I think, you know what I'm saying? So if we're gonna do it, it needs to not be in a, what's, presentation style manner. It just needs to be at a roundtable. We just sit with a cup of coffee and talk.
Well, and there's a little more background than that. We were meeting for a while, as you might recall. But those meetings, you'd asked that we have a representative meet, so we, I was meeting.
You were, okay.
We, I was meeting typically with a member of the staff here. There were some instances where folks were a little aggressive with them in those meetings. And that created some friction as well.
Okay.
Ms. Millie?
I just, I mean, this back and forth with Lake Wells is way before I was involved. But, you know, we need to be good representation to our students. And the fact that adults can't sit in the room and be respectful to each other is what's, when I sat in that forum at Lake Wells, I was surprised and discouraged by what I saw. And from, it was everybody on the stage. No one, I mean, everybody was stern, nobody went, we can't, I would like to have it, be able to sit and have a conversation and show our students that, yes, we are competitive, but we are going to work with these people as adults as we expect you to do with your peers while you're in school.
That is correct.
Like, I have never sat on a board that's had such dissension with other persons when it's been changed over. It's 20 years old at this point, at least 15 years old. We have got to sit in a room and be able to talk to these adults, even if it's board and not staff. Whatever, I mean, whatever you think, if it's building relationships, I don't know how to do it, but it needs to be done.
It, it's just being able to talk. We have to be able to talk. And so I will go back to them and, and let them know that our board would like to do that in, with the intent, in a relaxed atmosphere, with the intent of having a fair and reasonable, balanced conversation.
Yes, sir. That guy's ad, I mean, if they don't want to on their face.
It's okay.
Then let's go have the meeting out there anyway. Let's, let's go, let's, let's go sit out there in the lib, library, we'll note, note, notice it. Say, anybody wants to come talk to us, let's, let's try to work this out. Because there's six million things that we could do that would make this better. I mean, I, there's just a million of them. That don't, that don't even require law. It's just administration on both sides. I mean, I, I do think at this point, staff doesn't do well on either side. That, that was a staff-driven forum, whatever, whatever that thing was that we went to, which was two hours of my life I'm never getting back. And I, at some point, you don't wait for approval. You just go out and say, hey, we're here. Come talk to us. If nobody comes, talk to us, then let's go home. But, you know, I, I think we have to make, and none of, you know, if the majority of the board doesn't wanna do, or if, my point being, not everybody on the board has to do, do that if everybody doesn't, doesn't wanna do it. But if there's a majority who wants to, we should go do it. Just make ourselves available on a Saturday where, where it's, where it's like casual.
Mr. Wilson could probably manage a meeting.
Yeah?
Well, I think we put together, I think I just have to ensure them that, that it's gonna be a, a meeting where we can talk and not a meeting where people are talking at each other. I think that's what we have to do.
Right, but that's set the tone.
And that's what I've heard here. So setting the tone, exactly.
Set the tone.
Ms. Fields?
I'm not doing a Saturday meeting. Y'all can do it if you want to, but I'm not. And my take is, should we force anything upon invited? And if they need to have time to cool off, give them that opportunity and then circle back. But I don't think you can make somebody do something that they really are not willing to do at this point in time. And that's just my take on it. But I, I definitely, I'm not doing Saturday and I'm not doing Sunday.
Any other comments? Well, I'll get back to them and let them know that we're, we're willing to approach this with an open mind and, and have a, you know, a balanced conversation.
Think we do it? Just somebody living next door with the notes?
Yep.
I, I think they fall under those rules as well.
They do, but, but.
You're protecting us.
I, I have my client to look at.
I understand. All right, so with that, we'll go to board comments and I'll open the floor. Ms. Reynolds?
I had a question about our, I know it was, and I probably should have asked this in the agenda review, for our appointments for the, your committee. Yes, ABC, yes. When do you need those by? Can we get some meeting dates? I just need a little bit more information so that we can get somebody.
Mrs. Reynolds, I would like to have the first meeting the last Wednesday in October.
Oh, oh, no.
And so if you have all the names to Susan, then we can drink to the.
So it needs to be at the first October board meeting?
Oh, wow. Yeah, it's all of us.
A follow-up on Ms. Reynolds.
Sorry, this is the attendance boundary committee, which is the rezoning for, with the new schools.
Right, but.
She's calling it ABC.
When I read through that, it said that they needed this, 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 and this. And I actually emailed Ms. Wilmington to try to figure out what exactly they needed from the nominee because it was, it was a lot of stuff, like, they said, need their contact information. Does that include address? Did you see what I'm getting at?
Mrs. Porter will need to know how to reach them and to send them out material prior to the meeting.
But like Ms. Reynolds, I, I needed to be able to tell them when they were gonna meet, how much time it was gonna take, et cetera.
It will go the latest until June per the resolution. If, we won't, they won't be through in the summer because we wanna be able to have all those on recommendation to the board part of them before the school year starts.
Okay.
And if we have, if, I don't know, they will meet every month between October and June. But if we do, it'll be the last Wednesday in the month.
So you can send out the, the same.
Okay.
Could you, yeah, with like the specific dates if possible? Because I would assume you wouldn't meet that Wednesday in November. That's Thanksgiving week and December that we're off. So if you could send us the dates for all of those meetings so that, I just wanna make sure whoever I appoint is available for.
And what you really like, their name, do you need their mailing address, that kinda thing?
Right, their contact information to be able to send them out.
Email.
Can you know also which PA and S A, where you guys asked for us to have a representative?
Right, I did.
So, okay.
Okay.
Well, that was one we thought. Ms. Miller?
I think tonight, there is going, unfortunately, my daughter's at a new school and there's an event tonight where I get to meet staffs. I will not be at the board meeting. But I was alerted, there's some community members that are coming to speak about food insecurity and students' needs in that, in that realm. And I think they are interested in more of expanding the share table programs that we have at certain elementary schools. I also met with, it kinda what. I also met with, it kinda aligned without planning really well, that I met with the head of Kids PAC, and she shared some of the schools, which I thought would have been included in some of those food programs that she does not have. And so that will be a topic that maybe we can give them someone from the staff tonight to talk to for a contact on how we can get those schools connected.
Follow-up on that, I sent emails, I believe, to you Superintendent Bird about the sharing table, and to Mr. Bridges.
Yes, ma'am, and.
That was on my list as well, y'all are doing well.
While I was, while I was laying awake, looking at emails, I forwarded that to our Director of Food Service, because I know they'll have, they'll wanna look at whether there are FDA issues or whatnot, but she has, she has already responded and they're looking at that.
Very good.
And there was a recent statute that covers that, you probably know it.
Yes, ma'am.
Because West Palm Beach has implemented some stuff, that's what the community has brought.
I just wanna make sure that we're, that we're in line.
Right.
Ms. Reynolds?
Sorry, I just wanna confirm, that means we have to have it in by October 8th? Is that correct? Or, for the ABC?
The name.
We have to have the name in by October 8th. Sorry. I was still on.
Are Halloween reservations?
I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure that the 8th is when we have to have it in by, for the meeting on the 22nd.
Right, I would think so.
Okay.
Okay.
October 8th?
October 8th is our deadline.
Can you have mine, right?
Okay, other board comments?
Were we supposed to, were we supposed to expand our guardian program this meeting? Somebody asked me, approve guardians?
We had some new ones that come on board, and what we did was, I think we had, what, seven? Is it seven? The guardians, we had seven that we, that came on, anytime they didn't drop off, we bring them back on.
Okay.
But we're all covered.
Okay.
Yeah, every school was covered.
All right, because somebody said something, we had, I don't know.
There is some turnover, I mean, there's turnover.
And I, I, I'm still trying to figure out teacher and employee pay over the summer a little bit. So when you do direct deposit, it, I have an issue if you wanna change a bank or something. They wouldn't even cut them a check, a paycheck. So like, they changed banks, and, you know, I just was hoping that somebody could help our customer service end of that a little bit.
Mr. Wrong.
Can I get with you?
Yes, but.
They just need more details.
Yes, it's complicated, I don't know. And then, of course, Mary Ann, Superintendent Bird, how do you wanna handle, proceed with that, naming a health clinic after Ms. Capazilla? I have it again, please, I'll take it.
Did I do that?
Yes, she did, and I never got it back, so.
I had, had notes on there that were, I couldn't, I couldn't.
Okay. I just wanted to ask Superintendent Bird how we can proceed on that, I mean, I see the information here, do I just follow this, or?
I think that's gonna be more than just my input on that as well, and I need to get with Mr. Carone and talk about that. I think that's gonna be more of a, is that gonna be a committee that week?
That's a building, that's.
A building, yeah, that's, that's.
I thought it was a policy.
I thought, yeah.
It is.
We'll get what Ms. Ford.
Thank you, I just wanted to put it out there, again.
Any other board comments?
I support that, by the way, so, whatever the procedure is. Couple of things, one, busing, I thought, with one, one notable individual except, exception, I thought went really well this year, like, at the beginning, I, as I understand it, we handled 10,000 calls on the first day of school. That's a lot of calls. And I think the, the, the call center and staffing and all of that mattered enough, and I think, related to the one thing that went wrong, we should probably build in a dedicated special needs line at the beginning of the year, next, next, next year, like, like, or just a thought, to work out someone who, in that call center, whose, whose job is built around monitoring, tracking, whatever, you know, like, who, who can escalate faster when there's a child at particular risk. So I, I hope that we'll be thinking about that for next, for next year, like, have, you know, maybe bring somebody in from, from ESE or whatever, who can specifically be in charge of that.
I think they're already, they've already started the conversation.
See, way, way ahead of me. Second part, I wanna take a second to talk about VAM. Done a little research on this. The actual white paper model they're, they're using on that equation dates to 2011, you guys aware of that? I, I, there's a, I have a funny personal tie to that, that I'm not gonna go into, but I'm not responsible for it, but, you know, it's tied to it oddly enough. As I've, as I've written, it was discredited by statisticians, and even the American Statistical Association, or whatever, whatever it is, in 2014. It's 2019, it's still being used as a weapon, DOE hides it, so you, so you have to go search for it and search for it on their, their, their website. That's, that's how proud they are of it. I think, until it's purged, and maybe it's purged this year, maybe it's not. I mean, it's still being used, as I understand it, to affect compensation pretty importantly. You know, I think, the end, when the school grades come, come, come out, we typically know if there's gonna be a school subject to these kind of reroutings, right? That's like, we know this school or that, that school, we know at some point the state's gonna come out with their, their population, right? Is that, I'm asking, is that correct? Like, I mean.
When the school grades come out, they usually we get, you know, they'll have an idea once they release it, but we don't get VAM at that, that same time, we don't get that data, we get it, as you can see, we got it when, right before school opened this week. One of the things Wendy is gonna work on this year, once the grades and the data's released, if they can release the VAM then, and we'll know ahead of time.
Wendy Dodge? So that would be one of our legislative.
We had that conversation with her.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I, our legislative position ought to be getting rid of it, but, but, yes, absolutely. My, my point was, like, we know the schools that are, that are potentially sub, subject to it, we don't, we don't know what the VAM is, so. I would like, and I'm gonna see if the board is on board with this, to, any time VAM comes out and we know there's gonna be a transfer based on that, that before those transfers are ordered, that the board meet and be either notified of it or have it discussed in a, in a meeting. You know, we can express our will on whether or not we should go through with those tra, tra, transfers, not, I understand there are authority issues there, and, but what I don't wanna have, which has happened every time we've dealt with VAM in the last, since I've been affiliated with the board, is the transfers are ordered, there's an explosion, and then the explosion is dealt with retroactively. I think we would do a lot better, both in dealing with the public as a whole, and dealing with Tallahassee as, as a whole, calling attention to how ridiculous it is, if we have some sort of emergency meeting when there's a VAM, when there's a series of VAM transfers ordered. To me, that falls under the stakeholder management quick question of the Chief of Staff, I mean, that's, that's the kind of thing I would like to see Chief of Staff thinking about. So I don't know who's on board with that with me, I don't know if there's a show of hands, but it's, it's a notification before we make the trans. I, I want to be notified of the transfers before the teachers are, in a, in a, in a public setting, so we know that they're coming as a board. So anyway, who?
All right.
But you can do that by email, why do we have to have an emergency meeting? Let's us know.
Because, because it's an emergency situation, it certainly was experienced as an emergency situation, and it's a question of dealing with the, yeah, public.
But it's not our job.
I completely understand receiving an email would have been great, just to know when somebody calls you this is happening. But as far as having a meeting, my understanding is we didn't receive that information until Friday morning. So to get all of us in a room, even if we were all able to meet on Friday, just doesn't seem feasible that if it has to happen, we need teachers to be able to start moving as soon as possible before the first day of school. But to that point, I think it would be great if we could get in our legislative platform, even if it's not released necessarily when grades are released, but that it has to be released by July 31st to have any move implications, something like that, and in language, that we would have to know before teachers go back to school if they're going to move teachers based on a VAM score, would be my vote for something to go onto our legislative platform.
That was a conversation with Wendy and I, actually, this year's a little bit earlier than last year, because it was actually after school started. And once it's released at that time, we really start moving. I can tell you, this year, we were a little better than the previous two years, because we are monitoring the, it's a three-year average. So we are monitoring what we have currently, so as we're looking at the teachers this year, we pretty much know these teachers are on our radar for the end of this year when the, when the scores come out, and VAM, so we start looking at that. So we didn't have the massive movement we've had two years ago this year. We had movement because there were some, when we had all those schools fall in, we had more to fall in this year. So those teachers were already there, and we had to start shifting within the building. Also, it is not, they're not placed out of field, so they are able to move within the building, and we did get to keep them in the building this year versus the state would say, take them out of the building. So we were able to keep them within their own buildings this year and not take them out, with exceptional schools that are EO, there is no question about that. And the state act, actually has that written into their statute of that we're gonna start shifting these teachers out, and they're asking. They're pulling, they pull their own rosters, they, they will ask you about a particular teacher, is Jackie Bird still in this tested grade? And they're actually monitoring that as well, so we do try to move it as quickly as possible this year. We tried, we kept them in their buildings as much as we could this year.
Yes, and Superintendent Bird, having gone through, even as a non-board member, I addressed y'all about VAM, and you know my feeling about it, and I know that it is an improvement. And even back when I was a classroom teacher, our building principal let us know that you're not gonna be, I'm gonna use Sarah. Sarah Fortin's not gonna be an eighth-grade science teacher next year because you're probably, right. So do you wanna move schools now, or do you wanna teach sixth grade history, or whatever? That piece works out very well, and then not having to move schools and be out of field was very important. But it is still, and I wanna say it publicly, the most degrading personal attack on teachers possible. It's saying, basically, you're not very good, and they take it to heart.
Ms. Cunningham?
How many teachers moved? This year? I asked for that, I haven't got it.
We got the.
Roughly.
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 Roughly between all the schools with the new ones coming on within there, I believe that this year was less than 40. Tetra had to leave out and go correct the job description. In the three schools that we had no choice,
Yes.
I know there was about 12 of those, and we settled moving them out.
Okay, so the numbers have continuously. But it disrupts.
It's gone now, it does.
It's gone one. Sure, I understand.
Ms. Miller?
I, Ms. Reynolds mentioned, like, I would like to have been notified that was happening, I don't know that we would be able to get together, but it would have been nice to know, especially, you know, because if you hear it from the community first, they expect us to know, and, and I didn't. And so if we, I don't know how we're gonna work that next year, but if we could be privy to that information before it happens.
It's just a quick one-line email.
Right, just a quick email.
VAM scores came out, we're moving.
Mr. Townsend?
I mean, I wanna address, I wanna address something Ms. Cunningham said about it not being our job, I, I disagree. It is, it is our job to have, to know what, what the experiences of the people who work for this organization are. It's, it's our job to know if we've moved a teacher out of a school, leaving behind no certified teachers on the first day of school. It's, it's our job to have a position with our legislators, I mean, for, since 2011, we've certainly chosen to thank them for this, rather than fight, fight, fight them upon it. This is the single, no other state in the country does this, no, it is a despicable practice that we should, every year, mark when they make us do it. The, the superintendent of schools of Pasto County, last, last year, flat out said he wasn't gonna do it. I've tried to follow up to see if he actually felt, followed through on that, if, if there was any, do you, do you, do you know? Did he? You know, in, absent that, every year, we need to make them pay a price for doing, for doing, 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 doing this. This year, the only people who pay a price for this are the personnel in our schools and the kids they serve. The people ordering this need to pay a price, that's why we need to be here publicly. I agree, I mean, if it happens on a Friday afternoon, and it's not feasible to have a meeting about it that Friday afternoon, fine, we'll have it the next Tuesday. The point is to mark it, and to make sure that the public knows this is being done against our will, that it is being done to hurt our kids and teachers purposely, there is no reasoning behind it other than pain. They are so, it, it, it is the single most despicable thing the state does, and that's a long list. But the, and to duck away from, away from that, as a board, is to be utterly, it, it, it is to utterly shirk our responsibility as, as representatives to the community and to the people who work for us, I mean, for the entire organization and for all the people we serve.
So my comment was, when you said we should have a meeting, kinda to find out who's going where, I thought you meant for us to determine or to hear who's going where and have input. That's where I said that is simply not our job. To have a meeting publicly, to discuss it and to express our displeasure with it and our disagreement with it, fine. But I'm just saying, I don't wanna meet here and have a list of names of who's going, who's, I just don't think that's our job. I think that's the superintendent and staff, but if you're just trying to make a political statement by meeting to say, we don't agree, but here's what the state, you know, has sent us, here we go, I'm fine with that. And you, I think you know my heart, so you know how I feel. I just don't want us getting involved in personnel, that's where I meant, that's not our job, so.
Madam Superintendent?
Ms. Cunningham, and I know Ms. Reynolds said this, I commit to making sure when we are gonna have movements, to send out an email that VAM is in a movement, so we can at least send that.
At least that, because we, we do get questions, I know poor Tetra, I called her three times, because I had somebody, two people trying to figure things out, and it just wasn't 100% clear with that sheet that was sent out, whatever, but if you, yeah, all of that. So that would be great. For all of us.
Ms. Fields?
But in addition to the press release that was done, that was a very well-written press release from Community Gations that explained the process, and the routine did a good job there.
Okay. Are there any other board comments? Okay, Mr. Bridges, anything? All right, if there's nothing else, this work session dating is adjourned.